Four, three, two, one.
Good evening, Yorktown, and welcome to tonight's work session town board meeting. Tuesday, January 12th, 2021. Let's begin with the pledge. If you can all rise and join me.
Oh.
I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Join me in a moment of silence as we can continue to pray for our nation. And the brave men and women who are standing on the front lines as we combat the COVID-19 pandemic. We also keep in our prayers those who are administering the vaccine that is starting to make its way within our community, our county, our state, and our country. We also keep in mind when we pray for the families of those over 350,000 Americans who have lost their fight with COVID-19. We also, of course, pray for our police, our firefighters, our EMS. And of course, we keep in our prayers the bravest men and women in the world who are protecting our freedoms every single day, serving overseas. Thank you.
Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Again, happy, still say happy new year. Uh, quickly, my name is Matt Slater, town supervisor for the town of Yorktown. We're joined tonight by Councilman Tom Diana, Councilwoman Alice Roker, Councilwoman Ed Lacterman. We have our, we have Councilman Vishnu Patel on the phone. We are also joined by our town clerk Diana Quast. And we also have our town attorney, Adam Rodriguez. We have a very lengthy agenda tonight, so we are going to try to get, but the board would like to start with a resolution. A resolution that I want to again thank that each member of the town board for working on. It's a resolution condemning the violent acts that were taken on January 6th at the United States Capitol. I'm going to read the resolution. Uh, we'll make a motion and then I believe members of the board have comments they'd like to share. And the resolution is as follows, whereas the violent attack upon the United States Capitol on January 6th, 2021, will be regarded as one of the most infamous days in the United States history. Whereas multiple lives were lost, including the life of Capitol Hill Police Officer Brian D. Sicknick. And whereas the United States Department of Justice uncovered no evidence of widespread voter fraud that could change the outcome of the 2020 election. And whereas the United States Congress and Vice President Mike Pence fulfilled their constitutional duty and certified the results of the 2020 presidential election, declaring Joe Biden and Kamala Harris to be president-elect and vice president-elect respectively. And whereas the Federal Bureau of Investigations has received information and issued a warning that an insurrectionist group is calling for storming state government buildings and state and federal courthouses on inauguration day, January 20th, 2021. Now therefore, be resolved that the storming of the Capitol was a horrific assault on our democracy, which has no place in our society. Either be further resolved, every person or entity involved in the attack upon the Capitol needs to be fully prosecuted to the greatest extent of the law. And be it further resolved that the true leadership requires building consensus, not sowing division. And be it further resolved that fomenting the type of vitriol that has been dividing our nation over the course of many years must end. And be it further resolved that the Yorktown Town Board urges all of our residents, neighbors, and fellow Americans to come together to heal this great nation. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution, when approved, will be delivered to the New York State Assembly, the New York State Senate, and Governor Andrew Cuomo. Entertain a motion?
All moved.
Second.
Second from, we have a motion from Councilman Diana, second from Councilman Patel.
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The resolution is passed. I'd like to just, just share a few thoughts that I had on what we just passed. I saw a meme on social media. I think it was Thursday, the day after, and I watched the just absolutely horrific events unfold in the office of our comptroller on TV on that Wednesday. On Thursday, I saw this meme on social media. And someone posed a question, you judge someone on their best day, or do you judge them on their worst day? And I, and I really spent time thinking about that over the weekend, especially with everything going on in our country. Everything that we have had to overcome over the past year. And I, for me, I think I judge someone based on how they respond to their worst day. How they overcome those challenges, how they overcome those adversities, how, how do they respond to that worst day? January 6th is one of the worst days our country has had in a very, very long time. And the question is, how are we going to respond? How are we as Americans going to respond? I'd like to publicly thank the town board members for passing this important resolution, for working with me on this important resolution. And for showing the importance of consensus. And I really hope that our, our leaders in Washington are seeing what we're doing right here in the town of Yorktown. And what this town board is doing and how we are leading. Because frankly, I think many know there was a time when the politics of the day would dictate our town board meetings. But this response that this town board has come together around, has rallied around, measured, it's appropriate, and it puts our town above the rhetoric, the politics of the day. The residents of this town should be proud, proud that you have a town board that continues to lead. A town board that continues to focus on consensus and a town board who recognizes, and I'll say for myself at the very least, that we are first and foremost Americans. You're not first and foremost a political party member. And what happened on January 6th should, I believe, the violence that took place on January 6th should be an offense to all Americans, regardless of your party affiliation. And so again, I think the eyes of the world are upon our great nation. The eyes of the world are looking at how are we going to respond from that worst day? The challenge is upon us. And I think the steps and the resolution that this town board has, has passed and the steps that we continue to show is exemplary, is exemplary leadership. That again, I hope our colleagues in Washington take note of, and I hope that our residents recognize, acknowledge, and appreciate as much as I do. So to my fellow town board members, thank you. And I welcome other comments from the board.
If I can, Matt, I just want to say that I'd like to also expand that reso um, to the incidents that, that occurred throughout the summer and throughout the fall where countless lives were, were taken and also buildings, families, um, uh, businesses destroyed. Um, and that, that the people that did that are also held accountable for the things that they did. I think that that's a, that is, it, it's been a travesty um, throughout the last several months that these things have occurred. And it has to stop. Bottom line. The, the, the attack on Washington, the attacks on the towns and cities and villages throughout the United States, the countless lives lost, that's something that we and um, law enforcement have to be allowed to deal with. They cannot be held back. This is a country of law and order. We cannot be like the third world countries where you see these kind of things happen at all times. And that's, I think this just needs to, the, the, the reso also needs to include that, but you know, at least it's said. Thank you.
I'm gonna, I'd like to say something, um, and Tommy, but first I want to talk to you because during the summer, there were two concurrent things going on, which I spoke about then and I'll speak about again. There were people who were demonstrating for Black Lives Matter, like my life. And then at night, there were the criminals.
Right.
The criminals that came out and destroy small, particularly small business owners establishments. And what they, what I said then is what I will say now is that they deserve to go to jail.
That's right.
Because they're criminals.
Yes.
They committed a criminal act.
Agreed.
But I do want to thank you, Matt. And well, I thank all of the members because you know what? There is no political party got to be happy on this one. I think what we've said, we, what we've talked about is, you know what? We need to acknowledge it. And that we need to, we need to acknowledge it and move on. But one thing, I got a call from a woman who worked when I was a town clerk. She worked as an election inspector. And she said, Mrs. Roker, you, you know, if there was widespread voter fraud, the inspectors would have to be the ones it starts there. And I said, you know, I never thought about that. I said, so let me tell you, um, we've all seen them. You see either six or eight of them at a table. And they're like, no result. There's one Democrat and one Republican. Um, and in order for anything to start, it would have to start at that table. And so to get six or eight older people to agree to do something, particularly something that's illegal, would be, I would say, impossible. And if that should occur, they, there are so many checks that they make during the day. People come in and think all they do is take your name and give you a piece of paper. There are so many different checks they do. And at night, they have to account for it. Each piece of paper that was given to them, in addition to making sure the machine, the, the number of ballots that went through that scanner correlates with the number of people who came in. And then, at the end of the night, they get to lock up their bags. And they bring them back to town hall and they go in, they went in a truck and the truck was accompanied to white planes by a police officer. So unless you now have the inspectors, the truck driver, the police officer involved in this, this, this grand scheme, I don't know how it happened. And you all have come into a polling place, maybe as a poll watcher. So you're permitted to look at everything they had that day. And at the end of the day, at the end of the election, you're allowed to go in and look at everything. And I said, you know what? You people, when I first started, you made less than minimum wage. You now make probably minimum wage for a lot of hours. I will stick up for you. I will stand up for you. And I will say, if you believe that there's a widespread conspiracy, it would have to start with them and it doesn't.
Thank you, Councilwoman Roker. Councilman Patel, do you have comments that you'd like to share?
The last one, okay? Let our, uh, councilman finish.
No problem. Councilman Lacterman?
Sure. Um, you know, and I, I definitely agree with, uh, Councilwoman Roker on the integrity of our, uh, our election poll places here in, in Yorktown and Westchester and all. Unfortunately, I think that, um, a door was open when, when different states, uh, a door, a door was open to suspicion when different states changed their methods of election for the year. And unfortunately with COVID, there probably wasn't much of a choice. And change, change always shows resistance and that's
I agree.
So, you know, where, where some, some areas we could be very sure of, some of the changes were not necessarily well thought out in some other areas. That being said, um, you know, I think it, I think it's very important to, to, to look at a couple of things with this resolution. One is that there should be equal laws across the board. You know, there's one set of laws that fit everyone. And it's, it's really important that, that the rule of law in our country has that. And, um, you know, we want to yeah, we want to make sure that people that commit crimes, we have great people like Chief Noble on our side, uh, and that, that, that they, they, uh, you know, pay that price. You know, don't do the crime if you can't do the time, as I used to say.
I agree.
Uh, so that, you know, that's, that's a really important aspect here. And, um, I think, I think the other, uh, the other thing that, that we all need to make sure that we steer away from. Uh, I listened to some of the news and I must admit, I have not been able to watch more than 20 minutes worth of news on any given night for quite a while. Uh, I hear the, everything being politicized. I hear, I hear people saying, put them on a list. And I think back to McCarthyism. And I think back, I think back to when politics and, and decisions on what we, what is our, our God given right and, and fought for in our constitutional rights in the United States, and that freedom of choice and that freedom to, to make a decision is now being pigeonholed. And, and it's almost like a political racism. And it goes on both sides of the coin.
No, it is race. It is. You're right. You're right, Ed.
And, and you know, I think, I think we need to really steer away from a very dangerous path that our country is on. And as Supervisor Slater said, look at, look at the five of us on this board. Yeah, we have, you know, four legislators and one executive, and the four legislators are split in half. We have diversity in people. We have diversity in politics. And we can agree and make things happen the right way. And it's really, really an essential thing that, that I think that we need to look at because I, you know, I read even in our own, our local town papers, I read letters to the editor that want to group people and, and pigeonhole them based on thoughts of other people. And that's, that's a horrendous, horrendous road for us to go down. And, um, you know, I thank my fellow members of the board for being able to see this and, and being able to say, hey, let's, let's start to straighten the ship out here and let's get away from this madness.
Thank you, Councilman Lacterman. Councilman Patel, you wanted to go last.
Yes. I, I really say, you know, that, uh, all the people around the globe cannot get together, but they were looking us at the United States. And something has gone wrong, really, very, very bad in the last four years. And I just, uh, it's really sad, you know? One party versus the other and rich versus the poor and all that. And then on top of that, the COVID came, you know? More misery for all the people, really. You know, what we think, what we see, and what you do, it has to be in harmony. That will be back because look at these, you know, the, the head of all the armed forces and Joint Chief of Staff and so many uh, different party members now, they are thinking to different way to be able to bring everybody together. Because the, the eagle has a tear in his eye, really, you know? You can see the, the Capitol building, you know? I see right now, you know, uh, uh, our son was there at the Capitol, at the White House, and, and right now, he's, he's, you know, in the Pentagon. Really, you know, I mean, he, he doesn't go to work there anymore because he's done so outside, but this is really difficult. So we have to really depend the Constitution and reject extremism from both side or every side. Because the country has to come first and not the, not the bank balance to get rich quick, you know? These are the, some of the problem has created in a society. So let's work together to make everybody equal, one law for all and same service for all. We cannot destroy the property of individual business owner as well as a national property. Let's create together, make every promise what we say individually or collectively, keep it together and make progress on this very tragic historical event in the national history in 200 years. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Patel. Well said. And again, I want to thank the board for their incredible leadership again for our town. We're going to go and begin our, our agenda. Um, I want to apologize, but thank our guests for their patience. Uh, we're going to begin with, we have a very special presentation from Thomas, and we have our, our chief, Robert Noble with us. Thomas, are you there?
He's there.
Hey, how are you?
Good.
Thank you for, for, for waiting for us. And again, my apologies for the delay, but we're very excited to hear your presentation tonight. I was, uh, I joined our town clerk, Diana Quast and, and Councilman Diana, when you brought, uh, your, your presentation over to the police department. Uh, and I'm, I know the public's going to be very excited to, to hear about it. So if you and Chief Noble wouldn't mind, why don't you tell us about the, about your project?
It's, um, it's a dedication to all the past and current members of the, the Yorktown Police Department. It lists the, the year they started working there and the year they retired, or if they haven't retired yet, the year they started until present. And for those that are retired, their last known rank and or their present rank. There's over, I think, 200 names on it.
Uh, I think one of them is, uh, Councilman Diana, isn't that right? That's great. That's fantastic. Chief, I know that, I believe it's hanging up and, uh, on the wall up there over in headquarters, correct?
Absolutely. Good evening, everybody. Thomas, I didn't want to steamroll you, so I want to, you know, say what you, what you wanted to say, but, uh, you know what? Um, Thomas worked with Detective Billy Gordonier on, uh, on this project. And, uh, it really is something. It, you know, it celebrates the history of the Yorktown Police Department. Um, you know, from, from Mr. Hyatt and Chief Walk to, you know, to, you know, uh, we, we've got to find another, uh, well, we'll be adding some more names this year, I, I think, uh, you know, with some, uh, some retirements that may be happening. And we already hired an officer. We got to get a, a tag up there for Officer Schmelmer who just joined us. But again, it's, uh, you know what? We've been lucky at the police department to, um, to have young, young adults like, like Thomas, you know, um, demonstrate leadership and think of us uh, and, and do something kind for us. We've, we've had several Eagle Scout projects the last few years that we've been the benefactors of. And, uh, it really has been wonderful. We went through a little lag. Um, you know, I, I can remember when, you know, retired Detective Peraldo's son, you know, did a canine, uh, course for us back there around the side of NCon and, you know, in that little patch of field. Um, and, and we had a dry spell for a long time, but now, um, you know, I got, I, I've been really blessed to, to meet, like I said, just talented, thoughtful. Um, I got to compliment Thomas's parents. It was my pleasure to meet Mr. and Mrs. Frallie at, at the police department that day. Um, they got a heck of a young man there. And you know, like I'll say it all the time, and you all touched upon it, what you said, you know, there's a lot of people, professions being painted with a very broad brush. And, um, to have a young, young person like, you know, Thomas, you know, say, hey, I want to do something nice for the, for the Yorktown Police Department. That's going to be there forever. He just left, he, he left, uh, Tom, Thomas, that's your legacy there. You know, um, it's something that we're always going to enjoy. It's going to be there long after I, I leave. And, um, again, it's something that, uh, the guy, you know, the guys hop and look at. And, and once COVID, you know, once we, once we get this, once we beat this, you know, I'm looking forward to a lot of our alumni, you know, stopping back in the headquarters, you know, taking a picture with the board and, and seeing their name up there. And, uh, it's a celebration of our history. And we're just very, very grateful to, uh, to Thomas. And like I said, I, you know, I don't know if Billy Gordonier is watching tonight, but you know, he, uh, I think he, he made things, you know, as easy as possible. You know, it was a lot of work for Thomas, but to provide him with the, with the necessary, um, you know, data. Um, and that was a labor of love for Billy as well because that, that was almost like a bucket list thing, you know, for us. And we're just, we're thrilled. I can't, can't thank Thomas enough.
I actually, um, our comptroller, Pat Caporrell, just sent me a picture. So I'm going to put this up on the screen. I'm going to share my screen real quick.
Excellent. Tell her to send some money too.
Careful, careful. She's always listening.
That's right.
I apologize. I just uploaded. It's a little blurry, but you can see.
Who's that?
Councilman Diana. And there's, and there's the board. And it's, and Councilman Diana is pointing to his name. Again, my apologies. It's, it's a little blurry, but that's, that's the board. And it has every, now, Thomas, can you explain to the folks at home the different colors and what they mean?
Uh, uh, blue is, uh, uh, standard patrolman, um, uh, gold is detective, uh, red is sergeant, uh, silver, I believe, is lieutenant, uh, black is, uh, captain, and, uh, what was it? Chief, chief is white.
You got it.
Awesome. Awesome. Well, you did a
Heck of a project.
You did a fantastic job. Uh, and, and Thomas, I, I want to uh, thank you and congratulate you. And I wish you were here with me, but I'm, I'm in this room by myself. But I do have here a, a proclamation, uh, from the entire town board recognizing your great accomplishment, obtaining the rank of Eagle Scout and detailing this great project that you were able to complete for the town of Yorktown. And we'll make sure we get it over to your house so that this way you can add it to your collection of awards and recognitions.
Thank you.
Maybe someday, Tom, your name will be up there. That's the chosen path of career that you want to take.
You never know.
That's right.
Thank you for recognizing a big component of the town of Yorktown. Um, I look forward to this disease ending or us doing something with it. And my dad being able to get out so I can come and look at your project. Thank you.
Thomas, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks so much.
Thanks again, Thomas.
Just real quick, what made you choose to do your project with the police department?
Uh, Pat, the city comptroller, is my neighbor and, uh, her husband. Yeah, cop.
I, I laugh.
His life.
Her husband was my dare teacher. So my dare.
And my daughter's dare teacher.
My niece's dare teacher too.
I courted probably, and I know Jenna Balcastro, my assist, my executive assistant. She, she, uh, she, OC was her dare officer as well. So yeah, we, uh, that's, that's fantastic, Thomas. Thank you.
Thomas, I knew about you when you first moved to Yorktown because Ms. Pat always talked about your family. She liked your family a lot.
Vinnie was Thomas's babysitter in the morning.
Thanks, Mom. You're embarrassing him now.
Details we need on the board.
I gotta say, yes, uh, let me just say the last words for the Eagle Scout. Uh, uh, you know, put his pictures and hear me. You are Eagle Scout today. Eagles, you will be Eagle Scout tomorrow, and you will be always Eagle Scout. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, Thomas.
Nice job, Thomas.
Great job.
Thank you.
Have a great night.
You too.
Bye bye, Thomas.
We'll move along to the next topic of conversation. Chief Noble is going to be hanging out with us for a bit, and we're going to welcome a few guests. We have Sergeant Craig Scatola, Jake Hopstein, uh, one, who's one of our uh, residents, who's been very instrumental in bringing this forward, and John Valer, Valerelli, uh, captain of And John Valorelli, uh, captain of, uh, police captain for the MTA. Captain Valorelli, are you with us? I see we have Sergeant Scatola there. Good evening.
Good evening, supervisor.
How are you? And I saw, I saw.
Another OC dare graduate here.
Yeah. Oh, that's too funny. And we have, uh, Jay Kopstein. Jay, I see you.
Hi, Jay.
Evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
John, uh, Captain Valorelli, are you with us?
Name's up there.
Name's there. I don't know. He's having technical problems. Chief Noble, would you, oh, I see John's starting to come onto the screen. Chief Noble, do you want to introduce the, uh, topic for the board and the public, please?
It's our, it's our townwide, uh, radio and mobile radio communication. Um, and when I say townwide, it's, it's the police department and, and essentially the Department of Public Works, Highway. Um, you know, whoever else is trying to communicate, um, via radio. And I think we've seen with the, uh, increase in these storms and, and outages. And, um, you know, just, just hazardous conditions that we deal with, uh, so often these days that to be able to communicate is critical. If you can't communicate, you have, you have nothing. Our system unfortunately is very, very outdated. Back, I believe, wow, it's, it's got to be close to two years ago. Uh, you know, maybe, maybe eighteen months ago, we had presentations, uh, to the board. And, um, after those presentations, you know, we did a little more research and, uh, the, the cost that we were provided with, we thought they were going to be substantially more than what we were quoted. Uh, thankfully, uh, Mr. Kopstein, uh, introduced me to, uh, Captain Valorelli, who's, uh, and he's a captain in the, uh, the MTA police. And, um, he can speak better than I as to what specifically he does for the MTA. But I only know that he is the man, um, insofar as their communications from Albany down to Long Island. And the radio system that he, uh, he demonstrated and showed to me was just number one impressive. And, and number two, if, if this can happen in Yorktown, there would be a significant savings, uh, to the town. Uh, without the loss, uh, of the ability to communicate as we should be able to do in 2020. Uh, our radio system was probably good in the eighties. It held on in the nineties. Um, now it's, it's very, very outdated. And to that Sergeant Scatola, Mr. Kopstein and Captain Valorelli, they can go into greater detail than I. But, um, you know, I've seen, you know, firsthand the, um, some of the rat's nest that we deal with in, in, in one of the sheds, in one of the shelters where, where our, uh, systems are. And looking at the maps, the equipment, um, just state of the art, state of the art equipment and, and the coverage that we should get once the testing is complete. Um, aside from, from the cost, it's just, it's a win, it's, it's a win-win. It's a winner for Yorktown. And, uh, I'm glad we were, we were patient. And, you know, we didn't jump, uh, knowing that we needed to do something, but, you know, we were just trying to, you know, kind of plug in, keep the system up and running while we, while we received an offer like this. Other, other police departments, I've, I've spoken, I believe six police departments have jumped on in Westchester County. I've spoken before to chiefs personally who called me, uh, almost looking for a reference, um, for the system. And they have, they have signed on. The, um, what we have to be cautious about and what the captain can, can articulate is, you know, we are in between rail lines. You know, you have Hudson and, and Harlem lines there. So we want to make sure the coverage is there and Yorktown with the forty square miles, you know, the hills, valleys. Um, and, and also the ability to communicate in our schools, you know, the mall, the Capelini building. These are all things that are being tested and I'm very, very optimistic. Uh, like I said, that this is going to be a winner for Yorktown. So I'm going to defer to, um, you know, Mr. Kopstein or, or Captain Valorelli, if he's able to speak right now. And, uh, to Sarge, uh, Craig, you can jump in as well.
I think, uh, Captain Valorelli is having, it looks like he's having some Zoom issues. Um, so Mr. Kopstein, would you be able to provide a little more, you know, detail as to the system? And, and, and share some of your knowledge with the board and the public?
Okay, the MTA, as, as everybody should be aware, covers an extraordinary large area. Goes from Port Jervis in Orange County out to Montauk, up into Connecticut as far as New Haven. With the possibility of going up to Albany if necessary. They've erected sites to cover this in a state of the art trunking system. Without going into the technical aspects of the system, I'll leave that to Captain Valorelli. We'll talk about it, what it does for our town. Because the members of the board are, are familiar with budgets. There are two types of budgets, as we know, the expense budget and the capital budget. Once this system is put into place, the board agrees to it. It will end capital expenses for the town of Yorktown. The entire capital budget will be absorbed by the MTA. Not a total gift. They want access to the tower, the French Hill Tower. And in order to do that, we would have to give up some of our revenue from that tower. On the expense side of the house, we would have to buy the subscriber equipment. Both mobiles and portables. In the short term, the MTA would be able to loan us some equipment so we don't have to buy everything upfront immediately. Uh, Superintendent Paganelly would be involved with this as well. In as much as his mobile equipment, all of his trucks would be on this. Why is it good for the police department from a safety standpoint? Many of you, many people who are listening may not understand the Yorktown Police Department has responsibilities beyond the boundaries of the town. Our court system for serious crimes is in White Plains. Now this system covers White Plains. And if our police officers have to go up into one of the adjoining counties, out into Orange County, up into Putnam, they will have coverage on this system. Right now, if they go beyond the reach of our system, they have to rely on cell phones. As just Chief described, cell phones are not always the best way to go. Now, some of you have read about FirstNet and the National Broadband System. It's a good system. It's built by AT&amp;T for FirstNet. And all I will say going forward on that is when the building in Nashville, across from Nashville, when that RV blew up and took out that AT&amp;T building, they took down FirstNet as well. Because they share towers and they share equipment. So cell phones are not the end all. They are not public safety rated. The system that Captain Valorelli is the manager for, the project manager for, is public safety really rated. That's important. How am I involved in this? I did emergency communications for the NYPD. I am a vice chair for SafeCom, which falls under DHS. It's a National Communications Committee.
Right.
So I'm deeply involved with it. And since Captain Valorelli just popped on, if he's still there, let him take it over. John, you there?
No, I think we just saw him pop off. So I think he's still having technical difficulties where, wherever he is. Uh, would, would you be able to, uh, in, uh, Chief Noble or Sergeant Scatola or Mr. Kopstein, in the absence of, of Captain Valorelli at this point, could you explain to the board what the next, next steps are? For us in this process?
Okay, Chief?
Yeah, we, we're continuing to test the coverage to see what type of mapping we would have. And, uh, whether it meets the ninety-five percent threshold that, uh, that would need to be, to be met. So, you know, first and foremost, we need to see that we have the interoperability. You know, that, and Dave, you know, and his, his guys do as well. We have to, you know, we have to test and make sure that, uh, we can all communicate with each other. Once that happens, um, as, as, you know, to what Mr. Kopstein, you know, said, the, um, the space on the, on that French Hill, it's a nominal, compared to what we'd be getting, it's a nominal fee. The, one of the nice parts about this system as well is, is that there's very little, if any, recurring costs. Where, whereas if, if we put our own system up, um, we'd be looking at anywhere between twenty-five to thirty thousand dollars a year in recurring fees in order for, uh, you know, the microwave connectivity, I believe. So that's something you're saving, you know, every, each, each year. Um, but, you know, we've seen the quality of the portable radio that we'd be utilizing to be able to communicate on this system, as well as the mobile radio, the in-car radios and the in-truck radios that, you know, Dave would be, you know, receiving. Um, and, and it's, it's, you know, it's a winner. I'll, I'll turn it over. Craig, you, you speak the language a little better than I can. I mean, I, I came into this, you know, police was my game, uh, you know, radio communications was something I picked up along the way. And, you know, we all, we're all tasked with learning new things. So I, I've learned quite a bit, but, um, you know, I'll defer to, uh, you know, Sergeant Scatola to elaborate, you know, a little further on what this system, uh, the, the benefits of this system can be.
Thank you, Chief, and, uh, thank you, Jay. Uh, I think you both summed it up very well. Uh, and I'm not sure if John's going to be able to join back in. Um, I don't want to steal his thunder from his side set. But, uh, just real quick, you know, the, the project started, excuse me, I'm looking at my other screen here. The, the MTA was in a similar boat, uh, that we find ourselves in, with an antiquated, non-public safety grade radio system. Um, and that, that was really the, uh, the, uh, the birth of the MRRS, the Mobile Regional Radio System, that the MTA put together. Uh, they had some specifications, uh, similar to what we're looking for. Uh, ninety-five percent of greater coverage, uh, along the MTA's right of way. Uh, ninety-five percent or greater, uh, on primary, secondary, federal, state and county roadways. And, uh, eighty-nine percent onboard train coverage, uh, which for us is, is a little bit similar to in-building coverage. Uh, the system was built out over the last few years. Um, and the, and the coverage without, look at the maps up here, uh, like Jay mentioned, the coverage really is, is from tip of Long Island through the five boroughs, off the Hudson Valley, uh, up to Port Jervis and up to Northern Duchess, uh, with the MTA, with the MTA lines run.
Let me jump in for a minute. I think Captain Valorelli is in the waiting room.
Diana, can you let him in, please?
Is he under just a phone number? Is he just calling in?
Right now he's calling in.
Yeah.
Yeah, I've, I've seen.
Yeah, we got it.
I think we're here. I'm Captain Valorelli.
Yes, sorry. I lost the connection. I, I was up and then I lost it completely and my apologies because
No problem.
I had a presentation for the board, but I, I first want to thank Jay for the intro. And I, I want to offer my thanks, um, for the opportunity for the MTA to, to work with Chief Noble and Sergeant Scatola for, and we've been doing this from, oh, jeez, it's got to be before, around about the beginning of COVID, um, you know, when we really started to work in earnest with the town. A little background, um, the MTA police coming out of the railroads had a very antiquated, single-band VHF radio system that had to cover almost, uh, fifty-five hundred square miles of our territory. And, uh, through some very, very long periods of time and trying to get capital funding allocated, we were allocated a, a quite a sum by the MTA with the clear task of going out and building a, a complete system throughout the entire MTA's, uh, jurisdiction in New York. Um, it expressed purpose of first and foremost, providing the MTA police with a, with a reliable public safety grade radio system. And then secondarily, the charge from our former chairman of the MTA, Tom Prendergast, was go out and seek the counties as partners. Because we can only be as good as working with the counties who we work with normally in the MTA. And we did that initially and secured great agreements with Suffolk County and Orange County. Um, but as we started to build, we were pretty much on our own. We went live on our system last, this time last year. And it has been extremely successful for us. Our build from a budgetary perspective was forty-one million dollar contract to L three Harris Corporation to design sixty-five sites. Um, and two separate controlling systems, giving some much-needed redundancy in this system. We also had a secondary, uh, contract with Len Lees to build a series of monopoles on MTA property. And if you can remember, there was all, and I'm a Westchester resident, so, um, there was a, we had a run-in with the village of Tarrytown. And that went to the governor's office and we put up a hundred and fifty-foot tower on railroad property and immediately within a month had to take it down. And, um, so it was, that was an experience for us. But, um, our, our work with the, our work with the local agencies has been critical for us. Um, we found that the, um, I, I'd say the, the biggest thing was that we were all in the same boat. So in our, in our contract requirements, we required what we considered ninety-five percent or greater portable coverage along our railroad right-of-way. And that was important because of our primary, uh, responsibilities. The second was a more wider requirement of ninety-five percent for mobile coverage along primary, secondary, federal, state and county roadways. In the case of Westchester, um, the coverage was beyond our expectations because we exceeded both portable coverage and mobile coverage, um, to near ninety-eight percent on each. We had a, a specific standalone requirement only by us of in-train coverage that we set the bar much lower at ninety percent, eighty-nine percent. We met it at ninety percent. And then the, the project requirements, as I said earlier, was to create both the sharing of infrastructure and interoperability amongst our regional first responder partners. I wish I could show you the coverage maps that show you the extent of our mobile and portable coverage. Um, but I will hard copy this presentation, um, to you so that you can review this at a, at a later time.
That'd be great.
I am aware, yeah, and I, and I'm aware for that, you know, of Yorktown's requirements are very much the same as some of our other system partners and, and an equally, I mean, what, an equal-sized community in Eastchester, I would say. Um, where as Chief Noble had stated, you spend a lot of time getting bids from contractors and subcontractors to try to replace your system. And it really, when we found those numbers, I didn't think that they were even close to what the reality was. And then the need for public work. Most public safety, and Jay and I come from, I'm on SafeCom also, and we come from a different mindset that looks at public safety as inclusive of those public works and DPW departments. Because, and it really matters most at your level, at the local communities, where they're integrated as one, whether it's barricades, whether it's salting the road, whether it's sanding, whether it's plowing. Um, you know, the, their responsibilities and the coordination, we know is so important. So what we've done in our, in, in offering this system to So what we've done in our, in in offering this system to the out, to the outside agencies is it's not just for public safety, police, fire, and ENS. We also make it available for DPW's Public Works Highway Departments that are part of governmental entities.
That makes that makes sense. And I know that we've talked about this in our previous conversations. If my memory serves me correctly, and 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 if it's changed, let me know, but from an action and from an action item standpoint, we were talking about a timeline that you needed the town board to take certain actions. I think by next month. Is that still accurate? Or has that timeline?
No, to to keep on our phase two, so here's where it becomes, here's where it comes beneficial. In the course of our phase-two contract, we have to get two things done. We need to execute our leases through the MTA Real Estate Department on our selected sites.
Okay.
And also get a change order into our contract, the base contract, to our procurement department. And it's it's large enough that it's going to require board action. So to be able to get this system through the MTA Board for a March Board approval, we need to get those licenses done as soon as possible. So we're hoping to try to execute something, you know, this month, early February.
Okay, so when you say, when you say executing, so you're, so what what is, I guess if we could be a little bit more specific, what we're requesting, the town, what action would you like the town board to take by the end of the month?
So what, so in your base lease with Crown Castle, specifically at French Hill, there is a, there is a one-thousand-dollar pass-through that would have been built into the nearly thirty-five-hundred a month in in recurring rent that would go from us through Crown directly to the town. In conversations with the chief and and Sergeant Scatola, I had said, our attorneys at the MTA said, if we can get that way by the town, and Crown knows this is coming, that would be great. That'll take a thousand dollars off of it. Now, on the flip side of this, many agencies that want to come to system, we look for a quid pro quo. There's a cost structure to participate in just to help offset. But if any, if a if a local government can work a benefit between the two of us, that recurring cost goes to zero.
Cap, can I jump in?
Yeah, Chief.
Yes.
In your PowerPoint that we can't see, give them your number and give them the number that you estimate those other, you know, the other proposals that we received. You you got it right in there in your PowerPoint.
Right.
Show the disparity between the price.
So, okay, I'm giving, I'm giving you.
Hold on.
Councilman, Councilman, hold on one second. Let let Captain Valerelli finish, and then you can ask your questions.
So.
Thank you.
Based on our, based on our coverage and working with the engineers from L-Three Harris, we estimated it would take four trunk radio sites to cover the town of Yorktown. The cost for the design bill, which I used the exact same numbers that came from our contract with two thousand and fifteen prices built in, was four-point-nine-nine-three million dollars. The cost to operate and maintain the system, including fiber optic backhaul, site leases, and an annual maintenance of a trunk radio system, would have been about five-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand.
That's, is that annually?
That would have been the five-eighty-six would have been an annual estimate for for your O and M, for the operation and maintenance in your operating budget.
Now get to the MTA proposal.
And and I just, and let's just be clear, that is not your proposal. I just want to, since we don't have the PowerPoint, I just want the board to be clear, and I want the public to be clear that that is not Captain Valerelli's proposal.
A very basic question. Is he a private running company or are they run by the the MTA? Number two, is a microwave? You know, this thing has to be understood with the technical benefits, you know, and again, we have a four antenna or five in the town. Can we use that one just to meet only our own town's needs?
So to the, we use fiber because of the, because of the amount of sites and the difference in the terrain throughout the Hudson Valley and Long Island. The determination was made that it would have been impractical to build microwave between each. And it's, and so we opted to contract with Altice, former Cablevision, who built a complete fiber infrastructure for us at with no capital cost, no capital funding, zero. They just, they built the system for us, and we pay recurring fees off of a New York City contract, which averages about six-hundred-and-fifty dollars per circuit. So, to that end, and the, when we did look at every, Craig, remind me, I think we looked at five or six sites, and we engineered it down to two plus the sites that we had built would provision the coverage. So and here's the thing, we're coming, we're coming forward, and we are willing to pay almost one-point-eight million dollars to build the two sites that are going to benefit both agencies. I mean, we're ready to go. And that decision was really predicated on, we were looking for sites, we we had found some holes in our coverage, and we found an agency in the Yorktown Police that was one of the most exceptional partners that an agency of that we could have. So we we went forward with the, a site at Piano Mountain, which is just over the border in Putnam County, just north of Shrub Oak, and French Hill, were the two sites that were determined to provide the most amount of coverage for the town.
And instead of four-point-eight million, what was your cost? What was our cost?
Thank you, yeah. What's the cost?
Zero, zero.
No, 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 no. It's nine-hundred-two-thousand dollars.
Well.
Please.
All right, so instead of four-point-nine, we're looking at nine-hundred-and-two K. And what's the O and M?
Zero.
We have a, depending on how we'd set the system up, we're looking at a recurring cost of about seventy-eight hundred dollars.
Ten thousand, we'll say, in O and M, rather than five-hundred-and-eighty-six. Sounds like a pretty good deal to me.
Can I ask the chief a question?
Four.
I want to, you talked about testing the system in Yorktown. Talk to me about that. How many sites were, did you test? How do you go?
So, that. Tested, we tested, we, we came in and spent a day's worth of of effort with my, with my program team to test every one of the schools, the community center. Trying to think with, what else did the the police headquarters, Craig, what else did we test out?
We tested tile locations, Capelina Community Center, various schools, the JV Mall, and a couple other a couple other critical infrastructure resource locations that I prefer not to name specifically, but needless to say, you know, the performance during the March testing, mediocre, to be honest with you, that wasn't expected. We weren't expecting stellar performance because the system is not built up necessarily well. What what we need to do, if this is going to work, is to allow the MTA to build a site out at French Hill. Again, you're talking about a nominal, a nominal cost, a thousand dollars a month of revenue that the town doesn't have already. So you're looking at twelve thousand dollars a year of of giving that cost to get on the system. And the and the build-out at Piano Mountain is beneficial for us because it overlooks the entire north end of Port Town without actually being in Yorktown. So the land needs maintenance for Piano Mountain, give us the full benefits with virtually zero involvement from Yorktown. You get the benefits from the site without having to give up any revenue from the site.
Right, so the thousand dollars in the pass-through, so that's not something that we're going to be, is that something that we're eating?
The only thing the town would be eating would be the thousand dollars a month revenue that from Crown Castle that the town's not getting right now anyway, because there's nothing up there. The town would would, the town would basically say, we'll give up twelve thousand dollars a year, we'll waive the rent, and they would have to pay through Crown Castle and Yorktown in order to jump on the system. So for twelve thousand dollars of revenue that we don't have, this is the the two, the two proposals that we initially got from the two different vendors and subcontractors were in the neighborhood of seven-hundred-and-eighty-eight thousand to nine-hundred-and-eighty-six thousand dollars. That was proposed to the town board about two years ago in November of twenty eighteen.
I remember that.
February of twenty nineteen. So let's call it nine-hundred thousand dollars on on the on the high end. Like Captain Valerelli said, we've looked at those numbers, and we think one of two people have. If we went with either one of those proposals, either the costs are going to skyrocket or the system's going to be built out to those to those numbers, and it's not going to be public safety grade. We've looked at real, real bill numbers, and we can't expect to get something that is a twenty-twenty-one grade, public safety grade system for nine-hundred thousand dollars. That's just for the sys, that's, it's just not going to happen. Again, using using the captain's numbers, you know, the real number should be almost five million dollars. So we're looking at less than one million dollars versus a real-life number that's four-point-nine million.
Well, for me, it represents more than that, just a number. It's a shared service now.
Yep.
It's a hundred percent shared service. As a advocate of interoperability and someone who, you know, lives and and breeds interoperability at the local level, it's it's one hundred percent that. You know, in in a town like this, when a storm comes through, like it did in in August, I believe, with Isai or or some of these other storms, or, you know, even Christmas Day or Christmas Eve, the windstorm that came through, we work hand-in-hand with the highway department. We work hand-in-hand on water main breaks and at town facilities. And we interoperate with with all these other agencies around us on a daily basis. We see this as the future. We see this as a one-time opportunity, head-on system, that is truly state-of-the-art. There's nothing like it in the area at the moment that we can even compare it to. So again, the town would be looking at giving twelve thousand dollars of of revenue that it doesn't have at the moment. The buy-in, we're looking at nine-hundred-two thousand dollars for subscriber flipping with with really very little recurring cost. And and to be honest with you, I haven't seen anything that would come close to that for us to drive to it on our own. And that's a total, that's a total solution for the entire Public Works of the town of Yorktown and the police department.
Cap, you, if I may?
Yes, Mr. Kopstein.
You have a couple of other issues that are beneficial, beside the shared services that Councilmember Roca mentioned. There may be grant money under shared services, but from the county and the state, that might offset some costs. When you take a look at task force operations, I'm going to go into ICS and incident management for a moment. In order to effectively and efficiently manage a storm, you need to have task force operations. It's a distinct advantage for safety and efficiency to be able, for all police officers at the scene of a road closure, to be able to talk to Dave's people and move equipment and the like, and prevent people from getting hit by motorists who don't understand what it means to slow down. Where has this been done before? Right now, if we take a look at Florida and California, they have significantly put their, in California, Caltrans, and in Florida, their Public Works into these programs, because in Florida, you've got storm cleanup and evacuation.
Right.
California, you had, the people who cut those fire lines were driving bulldozers. They worked for Caltrans, and they had to be able to talk to both fire and police to do that effectively. So this is the way to go in the future.
I agree.
And as far as what Councilman Patel brought up, right now, the Yorktown Police Department is on VHF. You get a little bit of range, but less penetration. The system that Captain Valerelli is program manager for gives you better penetration. That's why they need the towers. But you will have better access in areas where you don't get them now with the VHF system.
I think it's a no-brainer. I really do. Adam Rodriguez, can you just, anything that you need from your standpoint from a, from from the legal side, so that we can move this forward?
No, I mean, I'll touch base offline, and, you know, we can get the ball moving.
And then, again, I just want to reemphasize from Captain Valerelli's standpoint, we're we're looking at a window of about four weeks. That's what it sounds like?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions or thoughts from the board on this?
Yeah.
I have a copy of, you know, the presentation.
I think two years ago, when we talked about this, and I don't know that those companies gave us a price.
The the price. Yeah, the price, you know, was was under bid. The captain, you know, was very, I mean, he, it it's unfortunate that you can't, you can't see him tonight because he's just been a pleasure to deal with, and he knows. I mean, like, he explained this in painstaking terms as to how it was under bid. I also actually attended, there was a consortium meeting, I went with the prior supervisor, Gilbert, over in Bedford, and and met with the county and and other North County agencies, you know, about some type of consortium, and that never went anywhere. And I also spoke to someone else who I was turned enough with who's involved in a county project, who was kind enough to say, Bobby, the price you're getting, it's going to be, it's not, it's not all air. It's it's going to be significantly more. So, you know, he he basically said buckle up for that. So to to have the opportunity to to meet with the captain and and do business with the MTA, like I said, it just, it was clear to me that it's it's a win-win. It's something that that my my police officers, you know, sorely need, that that the Public Works, you know, Dave's people, they would benefit by it. But the biggest beneficiaries of this system would be the people who live in Yorktown, do business in Yorktown, and depend on the Yorktown community, remain safe for their families, for their business, and, you know, communication is the key with anything. So, like I said, I'm excited to have a a project like this where you have some control over the costs, and you have a partner, you know, like the MTA and like and like the captain, you know, who want to be in business with with the with police departments and townships like ours.
The partner has been around a long, long time.
Yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Supervisor, if I may?
Yes, Mr. Kopstein.
I don't want to, I'm going to put, throw something out there that Captain Valerelli may not be able to put out. There is discussion with other departments in northern Westchester that haven't reached this far. And I think in the future, you're going to see more of our neighbors jumping onto this.
Oh, absolutely.
And not only is this a benefit for them, it's another safety feature for our police officers, because when you have an incident that's on the border, you'll be able to talk to those agencies seamlessly.
Okay, I want to thank you for introducing us to Captain Valerelli. Thank you.
And I also want to let the board know that that our comptroller and I have had several conversations about this, along with Chief Noble and Sergeant Scatola. And it is, or she is fully on board with expenditure of the dollars, considering what the what the alternative is. It is part of the capital improvement plan that we've already put together for this coming year. So I just want to make reassure the board that that our comptroller is fully engaged in this conversation as well. Okay?
You're going to throw our hands up, Adam.
You won't throw up?
I'm done.
I'm done.
I'm done.
So so what I, what I, what I'll say is this, we'll work with Adam to put the necessary documents together and the necessary resolutions for the town, from the town board's standpoint. And and hopefully, we'll be able to move this forward as quickly and expeditiously as we can to meet Captain Valerelli's timeline. But I think it's great. I really want to thank Mr. Kopstein. I want to thank, of course, Chief Noble and Sergeant Scatola and Captain Valerelli for bringing this great opportunity to the town.
Thank you both. Appreciate it.
Thank you all, all four of you. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. I know I did, I did get a
Appreciate it. I know I did, I did get a chance to see one of the portables. Sergeant Scatola had shown it to me the other day when I had stopped at police headquarters, and they're impressive. They aren't sight better than I had when I was there.
Tom, you carried a brick.
I did. You're absolutely right, Jay.
The ones that Sergeant Scatola had were an older generation. What you're going to see coming down the pipe now is significant improvements and have the ability to have LTE built into them at the same time.
He was explaining that. Yeah, that's all, that's all pretty cool stuff and very interesting. But you're 100% right. We were carrying a brick at that time. It's funny you say that. We used to call them the bricks. You're right.
Tommy, I thought you carried a blanket and a lighter and some brushwood to communicate back when you were a cop.
No, I upgraded. We went to two cans and a piece of string, but other than that, we're.
Excellent. Thank you all very much again. We really appreciate you bringing this to the town. We're excited about it.
Absolutely. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Boy, there's a lot of familiar faces coming up. I might stick around for this next one.
I know all of these people.
You gotta watch out for a couple of these guys.
I just popped in.
They're infamous.
I know you peoples.
We want to again thank our previous guests and welcome our next topic of conversation. We are having a comprehensive discussion about, we propose overlay districts for the town of Yorktown. And we're thrilled to welcome, we're thrilled to welcome members of the planning board and the zoning board to join the town board in this discussion.
Good night, guys. Thanks.
Keith, thank you very much.
Good night, Jay. Be well.
Night.
Night, Jay. Thank you very much, Mr. Copsine. Always good seeing you.
Thank you. Be well.
Thank you.
Same to you, Jay.
I want to thank members of the planning board who had a meeting themselves last night for joining us tonight. We have also with us our Director of Planning, John Taggert. There's a fly that's going to land on my head and I'm going to look like the vice president. There's a, there's Director of Planning, John Taggert, our town planner, Robin Steinberger with us as well. As, I guess, John, if you want, just as a leeway, we've been talking about these overlay districts for quite some time. We have proposed.
Matt, I'm sorry. Let's just recognize from planning board, Gordon Fawn.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I did.
I'm here.
All right, Gordon, thank you so much. And we have individuals from the planning board as well. We have with us our chairman of the planning board, Richard Fawn. We have with us Rob Garrigan, Willie LaScala, and Aaron Bach from the planning board. And again, thank you all for joining us this evening. So this topic of conversation, and this is something that we wanted to do together, was about the proposal for the overlay districts for both the Heights Hamlet, specifically for the 118 corridor, as well as for Jefferson Valley. And so our planning department has been working tirelessly on the legislation. And although it would be referred out to your individual boards as part of the referral process, we thought it would also be very beneficial for us to have a conversation with the town board about the proposal to get your feedback and see if we can make sure that it's the best piece of legislation that we can put forward. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to John Taggert and Robin Steinberg to see if they want to add anything before we, if we want to talk about the legislation, any additions to it. And then we can begin a conversation or dialogue with our guests.
Okay, well, thank you. I guess the only thing I'll add is a very short description of what this is about. I'm sure many of you or all of you have heard much about it before, but just so we're all reminded, basically, this is legislation that establishes certain districts in the town. Right now, we're considering parts of Yorktown Heights and portions of Lake Osceola, Jefferson Valley, and that one is really parcels that are around the lake. And what it does is it allows flexibility in the zoning and it allows flexibility in the allowed uses. So for instance, in Yorktown Heights, on some commercial properties and/or residential properties, you will be able to see a mix of commercial and residential use on the same property. You may be able to see some residential use being allowed on commercial property. And you may be able to see some commercial use being allowed on residential property. Again, it is districts, so there are boundaries to them. We do have maps that we did send around to everyone. They were, they came out a little late today. I apologize for that, but you do have them. And so this will be under the authority of the planning board. It'll work, you know, similar to our clustering ordinance in that, you know, the bulk requirements and some density and use allowance will be able to be flexibly looked at by the planning board in order that they're able to choose and develop on the particular site the very best type of development that they're able to, that we're able to actually get. And that is really the description in a couple of sentences. I don't know if it's worthwhile to go further than that unless people want to, you know, ask questions in the rolling discussion that I think that we're probably about to have, so.
Do you want to show the, just from the public standpoint, do you want to show the maps? Are you able to do that, Robert?
You have the screen?
Can you see this is the Yorktown Heights map?
Yeah.
So we've included from the triangle around Down Commerce Street to Underhill, around Town Hall. This is the Soundview property. And then up 118, this is the Cable Vision here. So this is the vacant bank property and some properties that are along this right-of-way that we still own. And then this is the Wyant, Roma, and the two commercial buildings next to that.
And the Triangle Center is a new addition that, since the last time we've seen, correct?
That's correct.
Great.
May I ask a question? Would that still up?
Sure.
Can you tell me why you chose the areas you chose?
I can, and Robin can. Anything that I miss can fill in.
Okay.
So obviously, the middle of town, we have a lot of vacancies. And for instance, the Kmart Shopping Center, we know has some, has two very large vacancies. One has been there for 12 to 15 years without any use. The Triangle Shopping Center, we know, has had some plans that they have shown us recently. And by recently, I mean in the last, I would say, one and a half years or so. Concept plans that they have, and so they are looking to recapitalize and refit that center. They also own the property that has Maria's Pizza, so they do have additional flexibility. The Roma Building and Wyant, as everyone knows, has been in. The Wyant does have an approval. The Roma Building, we still think is active. We haven't seen them in a number of months. We understand that they are still interested in pursuing a development that they have, which would have required certain zoning variances and/or a rezone. The Cable Vision area, including the bank site that's been approved but yet to be built, that is obviously ripe for a refit. They were brought into the discussion during the Roma and Wyant review. They are, feel that they want to do some things and are willing to cooperate with some ingress and egress modifications. It also brings into play the potential of that, using that right-of-way, which would come down where the trail is now and be right across from Downing. That is a part of a very old effort in a number of comprehensive and master plans and has been on the table for quite a while. And so the center of town also, you know, has some potential and we think would benefit from some flexibility. You know, part of the reasoning is that the retail landscape is post-Amazon evolving situation. And retail is in a very different situation than it was just a number of years ago. And as you come around, we have a portion of the Front Street area that is really kind of the head of the snake, so to speak, in which they have some retail portions there. The Yorktown Highway Garage, of course, is in it. Some of the areas there, we think, would benefit and be part of the Yorktown Heights. We are also looking at having a separate district with some separate requirements that will be on the Front Street area from that border that you see there to the south. And then as you come around, we have the Soundview, the former Soundview property. And we put that in there because at the time, we started thinking about this, we knew that Soundview was going out of business and would be selling it, which they have subsequently sold it. So that was there to anticipate that it may benefit from some flexible look at what can go in there in terms of, you know, since it's such an iconic property, some of the things that you'll see in the legislation, for instance, list some desires of the town in terms of saving unique buildings, you know, some cultural heritage and things like that. And certainly, Soundview property has some of that, some of those issues that go along with that. So that is the basics of why we selected it.
Okay, I just have one statement and then another, and then another question. And the statement is, I would not like planning board to process an application at the Highway Garage.
Right. Well, there would have to be an applicant that would come to them, which would be the town.
That would be, I would have a problem with that. The planning board cannot process any applications under this law until we have adopted the regulations. Am I correct?
That's correct.
Correct.
Can I ask you a question now, John?
Yes.
This is also through the town board. The land is owned by the town, the Highway Garage, right?
That's correct.
If any kind of sale, anything else upon, the entire town should know what is in there and who is going to own it. If LLC or something, let the public know, you know, which LLC, why they are afraid of giving their name. These kind of issues will impact because once you sell the town land to a friend, town cannot buy it ever again with no matter how much money you have.
Yeah. Are you talking about the Yorktown Highway Garage?
I think we should be clear though, that right now, that there's no, there's no sale of the Yorktown Highway Garage, nor is there a proposal regarding the Yorktown Highway Garage. I think what John and Robin are showing us are the boundaries of the district, which would naturally, now, correct me if I'm wrong, John, but you also have, is that Richard Place that it's going down on Front Street?
Yes.
Right. So I think that's the whole point, though, is that John is just showing the boundaries and explaining why he lumped these pieces on Front Street in, as well as with other parts of the Heights Hamlet. But to be clear for the board and the public, that there's no proposal to sell or for some, or no one's made a proposal to purchase the land that the Highway Garage is currently on.
And nor can the, nor can the planning board approve some site plan on their own without an owner or applicant initiating that.
Correct.
So.
And, very good. John, is there anything else you want to point out on? I just wanted to make sure we were clear on that because I don't want the public to get a misunderstanding that with regards to the Highway Garage, if there's any type of plan right now to either relocate it or sell it because there's not. So I just want to make sure we're very open and clear about that.
Thank you.
John, you also added unique buildings?
Yes.
As, and we've identified those.
That's correct.
They include 322 Underhill Avenue, which is a Spadacia Insurance Building. It includes 360 Underhill Avenue, which is former home of Edward Keir, AKA The Grace Building. We have Town Hall. We have the Coldwell Banker Building at 366 Underhill. You've got the Captain Underhill House at 370 Underhill. You've got several on Commerce Street, 1803, 1807. You've got 1811 as well and 1826, which is the Yorktown Heights Railroad Station. Any others that you want to point? Of course, the Capellini Center is considered a unique building. So as a unique building, do you want to explain to the public what that means?
Sure. It means any, any building that we've identified, subjectively, of course, but subject to the approval of the town board. We identified buildings that we felt had some historic character, historic importance, or some architectural character that we felt lent to the Yorktown Heights. You know, pleasant designs and things that should be promoted and sort of looked at with an eye towards keeping that flavor with new buildings, but also maintaining those buildings to the greatest extent that you can in order to keep the unique character of Yorktown Heights, so.
And it's stated in the legislation that the intention is to require that all project plans retain original features of the buildings, including window type and configuration, front entry storefronts applicable, and identifying decorative details, including those that provide a historical reference to the original use of the building.
That's correct.
Stated within the legislation.
Yes, thank you.
And again, this is, you know, this idea is, if the applicant wants to avail themselves of the flexibility that you can be afforded through the use of this law, you know, the town has some things in there that would be advantageous for us to either maintain or have enhanced, such as, you know, the architecture of some of these buildings and so on and so forth. So it's, you know, it promotes a little bit more of a cooperative partnership with applicants and developers.
I also want to just make a point, and I'm glad it's in here, that the 370 Underhill Avenue, which is the Captain Underhill House, this is, correct me if I'm wrong, John, this is the main house on the Soundview property?
That's correct.
It's completed in 1881, the Captain Underhill Manor Estate. The estate was most recently used by the Soundview Preparatory Private School. Prior to the school, the farmhouse was used by the Gilbert Beaver Conference Center. So we do list that building as one of the unique buildings within the Heights District.
That's correct.
Great. Before we move on, I just want to bring in our friends from the planning board and the zoning board, and I want to hear your thoughts and your questions. And again, just, I want to take it step by step. So regarding the Heights Hamlet that you see in front of you and the legislation pertaining to the Heights Hamlet, I'd like to hear your thoughts. And no particular order, whoever has commentary, please feel free to jump in.
I don't have, my particular thoughts on the district things, I think it's a good idea. I had a question when I was reading through the definitional sections.
Okay.
And where you have live-work unit space. The question I had is if you're opening this up to a mixed use where you have residential and commercial in the same building, and you say that the residential space can be used by the employer or the employee in their household. The question I have is, I think you might be opening that up, which may end up with some sort of a boarding house, even because you can't really control what the word household means. And if you start saying that the owner of the commercial space can have his employee live there, you can end up basically housing all of his employees in that space.
Correct.
We give it more of a boarding house look than a residential look.
Which obviously is not the intent.
Right, but it could be the result.
Yeah, understood. And this is why we want to have these conversations with you. Because you can provide a great perspective that we haven't thought of. John, can we, any thoughts on Gordon's?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to work on it with him and just make sure that the definition, because I agree, we don't want to have wording in here that gets us something that we haven't anticipated. something that we haven't anticipated, and certainly not something that is undesirable. So happy to look into tweaking that language so it's stronger and more effective.
Don, are you looking at something like a painter having a studio in that same space?
Yeah, I think that's, that's the most typical of, of what you hear out in the world now when they make reference to live-work space. But certainly, you know, these things can be sometimes, for lack of a better term, misused. So, and I wouldn't want that to happen, so I certainly am in favor of, of clarifying that language and making it much more clear.
Great.
I have a comment. I think that some of this large vacant space here, we desperately need a new Town Hall. And we should explore putting the Town Hall in some of these large vacant spaces, like the old Kmart or whatever, or even the Soundview. We're in the ancient history when, when we come to our Town Hall, it's, it's disgraceful.
We're, we're moving forward on that facilities assessment. We'll be, we'll be bringing that back to the, to the public. We, and one of the things within that facilities assessment is going to be a review of the Town Hall, as well as potential designs of, of what a, a new Town Hall could look like if, a space design, very basic. But in regards to your point, Willie, I understand what you're saying. There's definitely enhancements that need to be made that I think we can all agree on. It, it just comes down to the cost, I mean, to, to be able to relocate us, and that's what we need to get our hands around before we, before we can move anything forward. And so, you know, to go approach, you know, Kmart, the, the Yorktown Green, for example, you know, we would have to purchase that property from the land, from the landowner, and then, and then construct, you know, a, a new facility there, if that's what we were wanting to do. So it's just also understanding the cost associated with the purchase and also the design and then the construction for, for that facility. But I don't think anyone's denying the fact that Town Hall can use a, a, some modernizations as well.
You know what? We're not so lucky as Portland built. Portland was smart enough to find that vacant school. And now the whole town is in that spot.
That's right.
And that would be great for us to find something like that.
We, what's the thing about eminent domain? Can you just, I give you a buck for the, can you own it?
No, Matt, there's, on the other side, there's a small shopping center that maybe we should.
Oh, thank you.
Well, we have a lot of vacant schools now.
They do?
Sure. Because of COVID, because of COVID, they're all empty.
Slow.
Yeah. Have a coffee, Alice.
I have a couple of comments, Supervisor, if I may.
Please, please.
I want to, I commend the board on its effort to implement these districts and the flexibility that it provides to the Planning Board. I think it's something we, we sorely need, even after a short period of time on the board. I can see that the vision going forward that this legislation represents is, is really long-term. It's going to have a positive benefit on the town, and it's going to allow changes to take place. We were discussing last night at our Planning Board meeting, an application for a new hotel across the street from the Albert Capellini Center. That building that's there is identified as a unique property on, on your list, and I'm not sure how that i- is going to go forward with the applicant's proposal at this point. But one of the longer-term issues that were raised yesterday evening was how we handle parking for sites like this, where we do not supply, you know, requisite parking in the community. So I think there has to be some way of bringing some parking solutions to create a, a downtown that this legislation envisions, one that's walkable, one that's not dependent on automobile traffic, and that has a different feel, you know, a village, community feel that we've been lacking all these years. So I think this is a great first step. I'm looking forward to working on the Planning Board to, to, to see this come to fruition and implementation. And I would urge the board to consider some of the bigger issues about, you know, our dependence on automobiles needs to be addressed and, and worked on and minimized. And I also just want to mention the green energy component, I think is great to have in here.
Yeah.
That's all wonderful stuff.
I appreciate that, thank you. Yes, we're, we're very excited about that as well. I, I just want to, can we explore that parking comment just a bit more with you and, and John and other members of the board? So how would you, just based on your experience and, and, you know, I understand the hotel application was before you last night, but how would you write that into, do you have a recommendation or suggestion of how to write that into the, into the proposal?
One of the things I think needs to be done is you need to look at what's out there and what's available in terms of parking. If you've got very large parking lots on existing sites like Kmart that are not fully used, those are opportunities to implement some of the flexibility here and create a different kind of shopping center, one that doesn't have acres of parking lots just for it, but might be scattered about in ways that become accessible in, in the community. I'm not sure what the answer is. I'm just hoping that we have the tools to, to try to develop some of these solutions. And I know that some of this is beyond the jurisdiction of the Planning Board, because it entails things that only the Town Board can do. So I think it's, it's going to be a continuing effort as we go forward to, to try to deal with some of these things. But we really need to see what's out there and what kind of planning we can do. And I'm, I'm thinking longer term than just a couple of years, you know, this, this is going to, this vision is going to take a while to come in.
It, it will, and I think we all recognize that, but we're just trying to take that first step, you know? That's
Sure.
Old saying, what's the old saying, you know, journey of a thousand miles begins with one step. So, you know, this is
Right, first step.
This is the first step that we're trying to, to, to take. But I, I just want, and, and John Taggert or Robin, if you want to just jump in on the parking issue that Aaron's raised, do we, is there something, is there, is there language that we include? I mean, John, you and I have had conversations about parking, about how we would love to see, you know, the less parking in the front of these buildings, and so the frontage is right up on the streets, and the parking is in the back of these buildings, and they can be interconnected. But I don't know if you can, I don't know if we want to include that in, in, you know, legislatively, or does that come as part of the site plan review process? Or do we put it in, in a, in a, in a purpose and intent statement in regards to parking?
Matt, if I, if I could just throw a little more into what's going to be this thought process here, and I think, you know, the comment tonight was made about mixed use, and Gordon brought up a, a great point there. And I, I think back to last week's meeting, I think it was Carmine Fersi was talking about like the, the project proposed for, by the Soundview School. And then you also look at what's, what the original proposal for the Roma Building and the Wyant Property coming in. Part of the parking situation gets better with mixed use and walkability within town.
I agree.
So, you know, I, I don't know if there's, I, I, I don't know if there's a legislative part to write into it versus having to look at the evolution and see how it goes. I think it's great to put it on the radar, but I don't, I don't know if, I don't know if it's a definitive thing at this point, because, you know, what, what happens to the parking if it's mixed use? You know, I, I don't know if, I don't know if it's, if, if it's appropriate to put the legislation in handcuff it or not, to see where it goes, to, to be able to have, once again, that flexibility that we're looking for in this whole overlay district. And I, I think, you know, we, the conversation rotated a lot around that last night with the hotel, about the parking, and what are the options? What's available? What's out there? So, John, what are your thoughts?
Well, in, in 300-254, paragraph two, it goes through, I'll, I'll just re, I'll paraphrase it a little bit.
Yep.
And it starts out, "In the course of project site plan review, as required by this article in Secra, the Planning Board may," varies as owner requirements as to, and it goes on, a, a whole host of things, which include, among others, parking regulations, off-street parking and loading spaces. Then it goes on later on in the paragraph to say, "Provided that the Planning Board shall determine that such variations are in the public interest and necessary in order to foster high-quality development and redevelopment and are in compliance with the general purpose and intent of this chapter, and will ensure compatibility with uses on adjoining properties." And then it limits any of those variations to 60% of the, of the requirement. So, so the flexibility is built in there in this law.
Councilman Roper, question?
If we gave, and now this is stupid, but I'm going to ask it anyway. Every time I look at a large parking lot, it's saying, everybody, come and park here. If we did, if we, if we started not cre, not creating as much parking as we have done in the past, do you think that that might encourage walkability?
Yeah, I think it will. And I do, I do think it will. You have to do it in a master plan way, so you have to think it out as to where someone will be able to drive to the area, conveniently park, and then, you know, take a convenient walk. It can't be that long. Some people will come and walk to their heart's content, but it has to be fairly convenient. There's a balance there, and there's, there is a, a line, and it, it's a matter of striking the right balance, really. But yes, I do, I do, through those things, you do promote more walking.
I asked that question. Uber is a big business. People will call Uber in a second, so if they thought they might not get a parking spot somewhere, they might be encouraged to not bring their car.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
I don't know, I'm just throwing it out, just
No, 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 I think, Alice, I think, excuse me, Councilman Roper, I think you're right, that, you know, we've evolved a lot as a society since the last time we did something like this, I think. And, and so obviously, you know, ride sharing wasn't a thing. You know, last time, you know, some of these larger properties were, were either, you know, developed or redeveloped. So, yeah, I think that would definitely have an impact on, on, on the walkability and, and people's choices on, on how they traverse to and from, you know, these areas. I want to ask our, our Planning Board Chairman, Mr. Fawn, if he has any thoughts or, or comments about, about the Heights Hamlet proposal.
I, I think as, as Aaron Box said, I think it's really is a great first step. And I do give you guys kudos for putting this together. And I also agree with the parking, you know, we have these seas of asphalt out there. And, you know, especially when you, when you start to look at some of these plans from the, the GIS mapping, it really is something else that, that we think we don't have enough parking. You know, I know there's other municipalities in Westchester that have approved projects with zero parking, you know? And I, you know, I look to my, my, my daughters, too. When they go out now, they don't want to drive, you know? It's, it's a very different day than it was, I think, years back. So I, I do think we have to look at that. And we had this really nice application in front of us last night. And, you know, when you look at what their struggles were, one being parking in an area where surrounding them at the times where they would busy, you know, would be busy, you have these vacant spots all over the place. It just seems counterproductive. So I, I, and I, I like the, the language that John and Robin put into this. And again, I, I can't say enough about John and Rob and Nancy and their crew. It's a, it's a great office. Very lucky to have them. But I, I think this is, this is going to, this is going to help us move forward.
I guess I just want to make sure, and I guess one of the purposes of our conversation here is, is one, to make sure that there are no unintended consequences, which I'm so glad Gordon brought that to our attention, so to genuinely thank you. But also just, you know, from an implementation standpoint, because these applications are going to be coming to you. And so when you're thinking about the applications that you've seen and that you continue to see, you know, how does this help or, or hinder that process that you all are, are engaged in? And I know we have Bill Gregory
Yeah.
Information, himself, a member of the Zoning Board. I don't, I don't know, Mr. Gregory, I see that you're on mute, but I don't know if you have any, any thoughts or, or comments on what we're discussing, but of course, we welcome them and, and as well as your, your experience here in the community.
Yeah.
There you go.
There you go, I'm sorry. Thank you, Matt. No, I think it's a, this is a wonderful first step. Obviously, when you start to talk about parking, we have to understand that all the parking that's out there right now is on private property.
Right.
So one of the things that we have to be aware of is when we start to talk about incorporating parking on a site that doesn't have parking, we also have to be aware where we're going to find that parking is going to be on other private property. So we have to start to include in that dialogue, people that own parking lots.
I agree.
The other thing that I was thinking about was that, one of the things that we may have to look at a little bit more clearly is the, there's a section in the code, in the proposed code, that basically talks about fenestrations, you know, the types of materials that you can use on the outside of a building. And we're starting to get a little bit into building code issues. So we just have to be aware of that.
Can you, can you elaborate on that a bit? When you say building code issues?
When, when I, when you start to talk about, you know, the types of buildings and the types of occupancies that are starting to build, to build, there are certain combustible and non-combustible requirements for the exterior sightings of buildings. And that comes out of the state code. So that's just something that we probably should look at when we start to talk about preferences for exterior sightings.
Okay.
I think what you're talking about is you're talking about wood and brick.
Yep.
Language. There are certain ones that are indicated as being non, non, not looked at nicely, okay? But I guess what I'm saying is that some of that may be, become an issue with building codes in terms of the type of building, the size of the building, type of occupants. So you just got to look at that.
Yeah, do you think that, and, and you think, do you think that should be spelled out in this, or is that more from?
I, I think it's just something that you have to look at in terms of how your language is, in terms of requiring or at least setting up preferences for exterior materials.
I think, that's a great, that's a, that's a great point. And John and Robin, if we can maybe explore that further, just to make sure that if we're, if we're providing detail on that, that it's not in conflict with, with the, the state building code.
You guys have worked with Gregory before?
Yeah, and I, I'm, I'm taking this as an opening to call Bill at will, so I'm, I'm very happy about it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Miss, you spoke something, can I say something to the Town Board or Planning Board about the, the, the use of what size the building?
Okay, go ahead. What, what's your, what's your comment, Councilman Patel?
Oh, the parking, you know, and, and the building height is now three-story or maybe even a four. Current building in the Caldo, Old Caldo Lake, on a current, whatever you want to call it, can you put a four-story building, you got to have a different kind of material. It was a really good point, you know? Mr. Gregory said that. So all these things have to be included in, in, before you want to accept the plan, you know, from the engineer that, listen, this could be added, a new material or a new way of doing things, you know? I mean, you can drill a hole and you can build anything you want, a hundred-story building, you can build it. So this is really good discussion right now at this point, moving forward, you know?
Yep, and that's why we wanted to bring the, the, the plan, members of the Planning Board and the Zoning Board together to have this conversation. I think it's been very productive, to say the least.
I agree.
Other, other points, I mean, again, this is an, this is a dialogue, so other points that you may want to raise, questions you may have, unintended consequences that you may see. I don't know, Mr. Gargan, if you have anything that you want to add?
Sure, thank you, Supervisor Slater. I, I think, and my comments may be a little bit more general in terms, but the overall legislation, it's been written, I think, really, you know, as I sit here in my 240-year-old home, takes into account and respects the history and the character of what Yorktown really is. And I think bringing that back, if you will, because obviously, we look at some buildings in the town, and it got lost somehow along the way. I think focusing on bringing that back is, is an excellent, excellent intent. I think the other thing about this legislation is it really does promote collaboration and cooperation. I think the other thing about this legislation is it really does promote collaboration and cooperation amongst the agencies. So, you know, our friends at Ibaka, the, the zoning board, everybody involved, I think, have, will have a stake in this, because it's, it is that important. The last thing I would say is that, you know, every applicant that comes to us is unique. They each have their own ideas, their own designs. And I think what this does is it allows the planning board and others to really have kind of a north star as to where we want to go in terms of the overall appearance of the hamlet, but also the use. And we can, you know, I, I know a number of times traveling with a family, we'll go to a, 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 a small city or a town and, you know, the comment will be, why couldn't Yorktown have something like this? You know, where it's kind of this mixed-use residential, you've, you've got some apartments upstairs and some real nice retail operations on, on the bottom and fire pits on the, on the pathways and so forth. And we can't, and we can't. And I think this, as has already been said, is a great first step to getting there.
Excellent. Excellent. Well, we appreciate your, your input and your comments and your service to the community on the planning board. To everybody who's, who's here, we really do want to thank you for your service to our community.
Oh, Matt, can we do Jefferson Valley?
Oh, no, absolutely, absolutely. I just before, I, I just wanted to thank them. They don't, honestly, they don't get thanked. They honest, you know, they don't get thanked enough for their volunteer. So the other, the other piece is Jefferson Valley. So Robin, do you want to, you want to pop that up for us? And I'm sure, I'm sure Mr. Box can have a thing or two to say, right? Right, Mr. Box?
A backyard, downhill yard or something.
So this is, John and Robin, why don't you wa- walk us through this? Because it has changed since the last time we showed this. So if you could just walk through that and, and provide some, some commentary, please.
Right.
Go ahead, Robin.
We decided to, we had included before up the Sixth End area and the Navajo Street area in with the lake. And as we were trying to flesh out the text of this Osceola Zone, we realized, you know, we really wanted to focus on the properties around the lake, the use of the lake and making the lake better. And that the Navajo Street area, you know, this area from about Gomer Court to the east has a different, different uses, different flavor and was not going to have the same, you know, focus on the lake as the rest of the, the zone. And we can, you know, add this as another part later or, you know, redo this area at a later time and that our focus would be these properties around the lake. So you can see the line is basically the red, which is commercial zone. The darker is C2 and then all the lighter red is the country commercial.
Okay.
And this area was included in the comprehensive plan as an overlay as well. I just want to point that out.
Thank you. That, that's very helpful. I, I just think that it meets, when, when Robin and John had called about, about the edit, I, the more you think about it, the more it makes sense. Because Lake Osceola is, is, you know, has so much potential. And that corridor, that, that country commercial corridor along East Main Street has so much potential. So I thought, I agree with their assessment when they were going through and, and putting the language together. John, do you want to walk us through the, the, the language of the Jefferson, of the Osceola or Jefferson Valley? Code? Thank you.
Sure. So it is very similar to the Yorktown Heights one. I will point out that the descriptive text at the beginning of it, obviously, is different because it's the different area. I'm just working my computer. So in, in that descriptive text, you'll get an idea of the difference Lake Osceola has to Yorktown Heights. But much of the, you know, some of the language and uses in there are very similar. One thing that I will point out in terms of uses is that if you read, read both the comprehensive plan and, and some of the language in here, the Lake Osceola is looked at kind of as an opportunity to have uses that are recreational in nature. Of course, we know about Osceola Beach and of course, this area has long been a recreational area, so it's really nothing new. But I think, you know, going from what Rob has said just recently, getting back to that, I think, we think is, is, is good. And that the Lake Osceola, the natural, that natural resource is good to actually leverage that, to do that. So it has more emphasis on recreational uses. And one of the things that it does, in addition to allowing mixed use and, and some multifamily, it allows the uses that we find in our commercial recreation zone throughout here, so that there's a lot of flexibility in the type of uses that can go here and then around the lake to kind of make it somewhat of a, a destination for you to go and hang out a little bit. If you can get down by the lake, you know, have a hamburger and maybe walk by the lake a little bit, have some entertainment somewhere, you know, some restaurants and other, other places like that. We think that is very good uses for this area around the lake. Has some historical precedent. So that is kind of the basics of it. I, I don't want to recite any particular, you know, details of it.
And so I, I want to go over to our guests, or if the town board has any comments or questions, by all means, please jump in.
Yep.
Go ahead, go ahead there, Councilman Roper.
Can you bring that back up?
Oh, sorry.
Tell me where the property known as the Summit Property is. Show me on that map.
Here?
Where? Okay, right there.
The yellow, yeah.
So it's outside of the, the district.
It would be.
I don't, I agree too with that too, Eric. The other thing was, we recently met with a gentleman, remember the guy who wanted to do the hot dog stand? Where was his property?
What?
The, the food truck area, which is somewhere, Alice, I believe, let off East Main Street, probably near that CC. John, am I correct?
If you go from the CC, you go one, two, three, four, five, six properties over.
The left?
You're right there. Yep. Now go one left, Robin. That little one right there. That's the property.
Okay.
Across the Valley Market.
Yes.
Okay, because one of the biggest problems we have over there is A drainage and B, we don't have sewers.
Correct.
That's right.
And that is the one thing that this gentleman talked about, that people over there wanted.
Yes.
That's been something that, that's been talked about for a long time in regards to those sewers.
Matter of fact, if I'm not mistaken, correct me if I'm wrong, John, I, I believe it was Mr. Roberta who actually wanted to connect to where Caramont hooked into the sewer.
Yeah.
And that kind of fell by the wayside because the, the, the residents along that particular area there didn't want to give them right of way or sell or whatever the case might have been at that particular time.
Right. Well, there, there's history on, on the searing here too. So there, there was a design that existed from many years ago, before my time, for a sewer in this area. It included the, you know, the Perry, Perry subdivision up where the R110 is. And it required a pumping station down by the lake, which pumped up to the Hill Boulevard, East Main Street intersection where the last manhole for the sewer is. So there's plans to do it. Varied property owners in the area have come forth and wanted to do sewers. They tried to put together, you know, a coalition of folks to do it. Never fell through, you know, and probably there's financial strain in order to do it. So part of the reasoning here or hope is that having some flexibility to get some added density or FAR or something like that may help loosen that up and make it a little bit more.
Yeah.
I, I, I do not think that it's going to, you know, break the logjam by any stretch of the imagination, but it may make it a little bit easier.
I think this is a fabulous area, but I think until we were able to bring some type of searing and certainly some drainage to the area, it's just like a losing proposition. That's.
I agree. Alice? One of the big issues that jumped out at me on this is the definition and the scope of the zone itself. If you're looking at making Hill Boulevard as a, a more neighborly street with various possibilities, I think you need to include the Hill property immediately to the west. We've seen some very, very significant development there with little, little effort or ability to get those to, that big piece to connect into the neighborhood well. I think if we include it in the district, we may have better opportunities to, to do that and to, to connect. I know it's in the comprehensive plan is to connect that property into Hill Boulevard. There is a, a right of way or an easement to do it.
Yeah.
It, it, what I don't want to see over there is a, another typical sub, you know, development that has no connection to a neighborhood, which we're trying to establish just to the east around the lake. If you're including Hill Boulevard itself, I think you need to include in the scope of that zone the, the adjacent large undeveloped piece of property in the area. That, that, that's a very, very big piece. It has a lot of potential. And I think it could be done well in, in inclusion, you know, incorporation with what you're doing here. That's, that's number one. Lake Osceola itself on the eastern side has heavily silted in over the years. And that's a result of unknown drainage problems that Alice was alluding to. All washing in and all the silt from all the surrounding areas is, is dropped at the entrance to the stream. And the lake level is, is threatened by that. And it, it, each year it gets bigger and bigger and the lake is getting shallower and shallower. That may be some issues that can be addressed in this type of district. If the properties around the lake, you know, can come together and work on that in some fashion for the benefit of the lake and therefore themselves, it'll help implement the plan that you guys are talking about. There are a, a number of other properties in serious states of disrepair and neglect. Through there, we've addressed one of them where the battery storage is going. And one of our conditions was that they had to clean out the vehicle storage. But there's a couple of others right near the lake that are potential sources of pollution, if not just ISOs. And one at the base of Perry Street as well.
You know, Aaron, I agree with you. I think if we're, we're really want to create walkable areas in Yorktown, the Hill property could have something which could be wa- which, where people can walk. And because it would be a development, it might be able to pay for some stuff.
You know, that, that, that's a valuable point. But we've had a lot of pushback on that particular piece of property. That's something that really has to be looked at with regard to the type of housing, the number of, of rooms per housing, et cetera, et cetera. Where you had the, the principals of that company trying to tell us that there'll only be 15 kids in, in, in 150-unit subdivision. I find that, you know, insulting.
I don't disagree with you, Tommy. I agree with you.
He, you know.
Expensive school district.
Yeah.
You know, but if we're gonna really, if we really want to turn this area around and anyone who's gone up there has to say it is, it is sorely in need of a turnaround.
Yeah, it definitely is.
It is going to be a development that is not a cookie cutter. And I agree with you. I think single-family homes over there, wrong way to go.
You know, that was, that was, well, there was apartments at that point in time. Now, right now, that particular area is, if I'm not mistaken, zoned for single-family homes, correct?
That's right.
Yeah.
You know, when we've got other places like the new Soundview School Development, you got, you know, come on, you got, you got over 100 units there. So, you know, we can't play these games in, in two different parts of town.
Well, that's proposed at that point. It was 167, I think, residential units, is what I read in the paper. And I don't know that that's such a great idea.
I agree with you.
You know, they, they, they gotta come in with some type of a comprehensive plan here that's not going to.
I mean, we're both talking the same line.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't disagree with you. To have a lot of children over there would be a death note for the Lakeland School District, for the people who pay the taxes.
And, and, and that's just one point. And it's, and it's not just the kids. I mean, there, there was no element there for, at that point in time, for senior housing, which our seniors need desperately. There was, you know, th- th- there could be so much more there. Now that I understand that there may have been some other interest in there to put up a different type of facility, such as a, a sports complex that would link into
Do that.
The, the gym.
He doesn't want to do that.
He doesn't want to do that anymore.
No.
You know, and I, I think, I think we have what to do.
But let's keep going, because I think this is such a, for me, this is such an important area in Yorktown and I think they have done such a great job in flushing it out.
Okay, so for the members of the planning board and zoning board, any other comments or thoughts? We heard from Aaron, who obviously lives right, right there, and we appreciate his, his comments. Any other thoughts and comments from our, our guests who are joining us tonight?
Nothing further on this for me.
Okay. I'm sorry, my screen is not showing everybody. And that was, is that, I'm sorry, was that Gordon?
Yes.
Okay.
I think it's a great idea, especially over in Jefferson Valley area, which has more, I think, undeveloped property that you could do something with.
Yeah, agreed. Rich, our chairman of the planning board?
I think it's a great idea.
And, but, but from the, again, just to make sure, from the legislative standpoint, do you, do you see anything in that legislation that you think we need to just, again, unintended consequences?
There's always gonna be someone who tries to do something that wasn't intended with any code.
You're right.
Now, I, I, I think Bill Gregory could speak to that as a former building inspector better than anybody in his years he put in. People try to get away with things and, you know, you could write something that's as perfect as you think it could be and someone's gonna find a way to, to veer around it. I, I think it's a great first step, you know? I know we had some applications back there some years back that just went away sadly. I think the area could certainly use some, some development to make it flourish again. And I think this is a good first step.
Okay. Any other, again, from the board, any other questions from the board for, again, you have members of the planning board and zoning board here to engage in a conversation. So I just.
I have one other question.
Yes.
Go ahead. I'll yield to Tom.
Tom, Councilman Diana, do you have a question or a comment?
No.
Okay. Aaron, all yours.
Are there height restrictions along the lake? What comes to my mind is that apartment building up in Mayapack and we're, you know, right in the downtown, they put up four floors and it blocked the lake. And I don't know if we have protections for that in this law or
John?
Language.
John, you're muted? Or, or Robin?
Robin muted, John.
Robin wants to mute, John.
Oh, I think that's true.
She has a mute button in her office. She presses it quite a bit. My door closes automatically. So if you look in Yorktown Heights, there's a height restriction in this. I don't recall if we have it in Jefferson Valley. Do you recall, Robin?
I believe Yorktown Heights was 40, so I did not put that in.
Yeah.
Make sure that.
I left that out of Lake Osceola.
Right, but that is an excellent point, Aaron. I appreciate it. Because, you know, some of the thing, that what you're talking about is really, that shouldn't have, not have happened over, over Mayapack. So definitely something to think about. Yes, appreciate it.
Right. That's a great point, Aaron.
You know, I, I just, you know, I, I think it's important takeaway that, that this, you know, anything that goes to the overlay plan goes to the very, very competent hands of our planning department and planning board. You know, and, and believe it or not, sitting in on those meetings every week, I actually respect you guys even more. Although I've, I've always respected the, 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 the people on our planning board and on, in our planning department. But over, over the past year, I've been sitting in and. over, over the past year, I've been sitting in and making my notes and, and really have learned a lot and unbelievable skill set for the people that we have there that really have the interest in our town in, in their heart and their minds and their soul. So I think it's important that, that, that people understand that, you know, we're sort of relinquishing some of that power from the board and saying, these are the experts and we want to rely on them and we want to let them guide us. And I think it also keeps all of these projects that come in cleaner, so to speak.
Wow, I, I think Ed wants to put an addition on.
Just outside the, the heights overlay.
But you know what I find fascinating is that it, the planning board's here and the zoning board's here because you know, when someone doesn't like what you say, they go over to that board and I'm, I'm just glad you're all here.
Yeah. If you don't like what mom said, go see dad.
That's right.
It's great to be able to collaborate with all of you and take your, you take some great, great points that our team's gonna take. And again, we're trying to be, I think I've said this before, we're trying to be very deliberate in our approach with, with these very important topics. And so we really do appreciate what you've, what you provided us. I think it's given us great feedback for us and for our, our planning department to go back and continue to work on this because we want to get it right. And, and so your feedback is, is terrific. It's appreciated. And as I said earlier, your service is, is as, as Councilman Lachman and, and I think Councilwoman Roker said earlier, your service to our town is so appreciated. So I really want to thank you all for joining us tonight. And no, if you have, and I think obviously the planning board knows this, but to all of you collectively, if you do have thoughts that come after the conversation's over, because that happens to me all the time, don't hesitate to reach out. I mean, obviously you all know you can reach out directly to John and Robin, but don't feel, don't, don't be hesitant to reach out to me directly as well. I, I'd love to hear your thoughts as we continue this process.
Thank you.
Okay.
Guys.
Thank you very much.
Service.
Thank you all.
Thank you guys. Thank you.
Really appreciate.
Great job.
And Bill Gregory, thank you for staying up past your bedtime tonight. Only following your example, Eddie.
That was wrong, Bill. Tell him. That was wrong.
That was wrong.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, all.
Good night.
Good night.
We're gonna move over to Greenwood Street and joined by our highway superintendent, Dave Paganelli. Uh, and I thought we saw our town engineer, Mike Quinn. And we have a situation on Greenwood Street that you wanted to brief the board on. So I don't know, Dave, do you want to take lead on this?
Sure. Um, what we have on Greenwood Street is a longstanding red flag violation from the DOT, Department of Transportation, and we have addressed that over the years by having it monitored. Um, as of late, cells and cells has been monitoring it. Um, it has come to our attention that we have an imminent problem because there has been very significant deterioration on the bridge over the last four to five months, particularly in the southbound lane. In anticipation of having to, um, do something with this, um, we've gone out and received some price quotes for a solution that cells and cells had recommended, which would put us in compliance, eliminate the spending of money to monitor the bridge. And, um, I won't mention the contractors except the one that came in lowest. First bid was $249,585. Um, second bid was $127,551. And the third bid, um, was $125,000 flat. And that was from ELQ who, um, we did work with, um, a number of years ago when it first came to highway at the, um, the bridge culvert at the bottom of Lexington Avenue, um, running parallel to 202. So, um, I think that it's something I bring to the board. Certainly, you know, it's your money, but I think that the sooner we can get this done, I think it's, it's an imminent problem and it's been recognized as an imminent problem by the engineers, you know, who have been monitoring it. So I'm open to questions.
Well, I'm gonna see, does Mr. Quinn have any comments that he wants to add?
Well, I could just walk the board real quick through the, um, repair that's planned here.
Okay.
So the, um, the concept, is this a detail that we got from cells? Uh, that the concrete would, uh, that the contractor.
Are you gonna show it to us?
Yeah, I could, um, if I could share the screen here, I have, uh, I could show that on my screen.
Okay.
Okay, are you seeing that now?
Uh huh.
Okay, good. So if you see the, um, the bottom picture, I'm just gonna blow it up a little bit more. Uh, you could see where the water line is, um, that, that's where there's a lot of deterioration. And there's a, a close up shot on the next set of pictures here.
Oh, wow. Yeah.
You can actually see the corrosion. And, um, what, what happens is the dirt that's on the other side of this, uh, metal culvert pipe, uh, you know, starts liquefying and running through, causing these voids above. And, uh, what Dave alluded to is there's been some recent settlement in the road. So this is something that really needs to be addressed immediately. Um, this is like a, an inspection tool that they put through to show the size of a hole. And they have another shot to show the road settlement on Greenwood Street, uh, as Dave mentioned on the southbound side.
Wow.
So the, the, um, the detail for the contractor, um, would be to pour some concrete, um, on the inside of the barrel. Um, let's see if I can jump back up there. Actually, I think it's on the next slide here. Um, so the contractor would basically stop the flow and work on one side. And he would set some forms and pour some concrete along on the bottom, up, uh, the side, up over that where those holes are in the pipe. Um, so this would be done from the inside. Um, the road could remain open while they're doing this work. Um, there may be, uh, a lane closure while they set the concrete, uh, while the concrete cores are in place. Uh, but the plan would be to keep one lane of traffic at all times and then only close a lane with, with traffic control, uh, while they're doing the concrete pour. And then once the repair is done on the inside, they would excavate from the top of the pipe and, um, you know, put in some, uh, Kcrete or, you know, some flowable concrete and then repave the top surface. So that's the proposed repair. Uh, ELQ is saying that it would take about two weeks to do this work. And, uh, as Dave mentioned, the price proposal was for $125,000.
Okay. Now, would they do this before they did the culvert?
So the culvert, um, work is in progress.
Okay.
Um, the road's been closed. We think, um, you know, we, we don't want to affect that project, but we do think this, this needs to happen right away. So we, we would propose to be doing both at the same time.
Is that possible?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, there would never, there would never, since Greenwood Street is now very active in terms of the detour for the closure at Veterans in Greenwood Street. Um, that was a concern, uh, Mike and I discussed with the people that were bidding it and we were assured that at the worst case scenario, there would be one lane of traffic open. And it, and it should be done in two to three weeks, which the other project is three months. So, you know, the sooner we can get this done, the, the better it is and we stop spending money for oversight and what have you.
Councilman Patel, you had a question?
No, I thought it is same contractor will do the job on this one.
No, this is a different contractor from Veterans Road.
Although, although we did, Councilman, we did, did give that particular contractor, um, the ability to bid it. Unfortunately, he was, he was not the low bidder.
Okay. This contractor is currently working.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
I was gonna say this, the contractor ELQ is, is currently working for the town at the fluoride building. But, but, uh, as they mentioned, the contractor doing Veterans Road, uh, was not the low bidder here.
Okay.
Any questions from the board? Councilman Diana, any comments? Councilman Lachman?
Oh, look, it's, uh, it's been on the radar for a while and it needs to get done. Uh, you know, safety needs to be our, our biggest, uh, motivator here.
The highway superintendent, Paganelli, to be clear, is, is it your opinion that we should declare this an emergency to, to move this as, as quickly as we can?
Absolutely, yes. Um, based on my observations, based on meeting the contractors out there and based on what our professional engineers have assessed us of, you know, I think this is something that needs immediate attention because if that does the, the deterioration continues and becomes more rapid, the, then we will have a major issue because that will be closed for quite some time. And with the detour in place, I, I can't imagine the confusion it would cause.
I, yeah, I think that's obviously the concern.
And if you can, you know.
What was that, Councilman Patel?
If you can, if this project can be finished before the spring, before the big storm where rain comes in, you know, spring, that might be really good, you know?
Well, yeah, I mean, if we can, if we want to move on this, you know, hypothetically, this will be done in, you know, February.
Right. I spoke to the contractor today, told them that I would be approaching the board and then said, you know, one of the questions probably would be, how soon? And ELQ assured me that they would be able to start tomorrow if necessary.
Okay.
Have you guys talked to Pat, the, um, controller?
Yes.
Okay, and we got the money?
Yes.
Okay.
I'm done.
Yes, I don't want to hear that.
I was done an hour and a half ago.
Uh, we, we did, I spoke with Pat at the end of the day. Uh, she is aware and she said it's not a problem.
Okay, good. So what are we gonna do?
So, uh, I'll make a motion that we, uh, declare the, the Greenwood Street culvert an emergency.
Don't move.
A motion by Councilman Diana, a second by Councilwoman Roker. Uh, so, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I'll also make a, a motion to award, you said it was ELQ?
Yes.
So we'll make a motion to award the project to ELQ for $125,000?
No.
So we have a, a motion by Council. Councilman Lachman. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries and we'll also, uh, make a motion to transfer $100,000 from fund balance to the capital project.
Okay, who's ever writing the resolution? Can you make sure you put in those other two, uh, prices that we got so we'll, we won't be bothering anybody that, you know, we did it, we had three prices.
Correct. We did get three quotes. So we'll, we'll make sure that we uh, we'll, we'll share that with the clerk's office so that she can include it in the formal resolution. Is that okay?
Yeah.
So we have a motion on the transfer?
Second.
I have a motion, so Councilwoman Roker, seconds. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Is what makes a man.
What's that?
What?
Any opposed?
What are you listening to over there?
I don't want to know what he's listening to right now.
Sounds like, sounds like Cobra Kai.
Motion carries unanimously, so we've declared it an emergency. We've awarded it to ELQ for $125,000 and we've approved the transfer from fund balance. So Dave, if you want to, uh, just let ELQ know to get to work.
Very good. I'd like to just take, take this opportunity to thank the board for their, their diligence in recognizing infrastructure issues that are, you know, have been long, long going, long ongoing and, you know, taking decisive action. So I, I appreciate all your, all your efforts on that, in that respect.
Team effort, Dave. Thank you for doing.
Indeed. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. We will keep moving. 1600 Front Street is, I know we're very behind and I apologize to everybody, but we have 1600 Front Street, which is a transitional zone use. We have Keith Holmes joining us to discuss his proposal and we also are going to be rejoined by John Tegger and Robin Steinberg.
Robin.
Hello again. I haven't seen, we haven't seen you guys in a while.
We were always here.
Very good. And do we have Mr. Holmes? He's connecting?
Yeah.
So why don't, can we, while he connects, John and Robin, do you want to just give the board a history of this, of this property? Uh, because I think it was, there were some decisions made by previous boards before we were all here?
Oh, okay, yeah. Believe it or not, I was, uh, my eyes had jumped to, uh, the LWRP, so I was.
No, you're excited about that, but no.
I skipped right over. Okay, so this, this is relative to, uh, the Roberta property that's was approved on a transitional zone over on Front Street.
What's the Berna property?
Roberta, I'm sorry.
I, I wasn't here, so tell me what.
So, uh, I'm gonna use a landmark. You, you know where the, the car wash is, right? And then a little south of that is a, is a residence?
Yeah.
Okay, right south of that is the property that George Roberta has and he got an approval from the town board to do two buildings with a site plan, uh, under a transitional zone.
Okay.
Uh, and it has recently, you know, in the last number of months, finally gotten its approval from DEP, so on and so forth, and is, is now getting ready to go. And as I understand it, Mr. Holmes is, uh, interested in taking one of the buildings. I think it's the smaller building on the north side. And, um, he has some use that he has that wasn't, uh, particularly anticipated. Uh, and as you know, the transitional zone and the way we use that, it is very specific. You approve the use, you approve where the building goes, where everything, every line and piece of concrete goes and, and that's kind of, uh, all you get. So, uh, I, I'll turn it over to Mr. Holmes. He can describe his use. And then, uh, if you want, I can let you know a little bit about what I think the step would be.
Thank you, John. Mr. Holmes, good evening. Sorry for being so late.
No, it's okay. Uh, good evening. I was just working, so, uh, no worries. Thank you. I'm familiar with that. The town meetings tend to run a little late. No worries.
Thank you.
And God bless all of you for, uh, for, for sticking in there on these, these late meetings. So that parcel's approved for two buildings. This, the northerly building is a, approved for, I think it's a 2100 square foot retail site. And then the southerly building is approximately 22,000 square feet. And John, correct me if I'm wrong, um, for a two-story, uh, what is residential over commercial use? It looks like. I'm just looking at the plan here. And, um, the southerly building is fine for what we have in mind. But on northerly building for the small building, which is the 2100 square feet, um, we want to have a change of, um, we want to use that for research and development, for renewable energy research. Yeah, so, um, so my partner is Swarnav Pejari, who, uh, most of you are familiar with from the climate smart community. So, um, we, we, we have, um, several companies, but primarily what this will be for is for research into, um, renewable energy as I, as I put into the, the email. So most of us focusing on piezoelectricity, um, and low voltage use, um, without jumping too deep into it. I don't want to jump and get too technical, but it's, it involves, um, I'm trying to think how to word this best, um, wearable technology is, is kind of what we focus on and also, um, anything in the renewable energy field that involves low voltage. Am I making sense? I, I apologize if I'm bouncing around a little bit, so.
Yeah, Robin, do you have a, do you have a, the site plan that you can pop up there for us?
I do, actually. This is the plan that the town board approved and, um, like John said, this is actually Front Street where it turns to the right. And there's the, um, right of way that was, um, still going straight. So that's the, where this property was.
And it's building on the left that we're talking about.
Right, this is the 2100 square.
Keith, you're, you're, you're going to occupy the whole property?
Yeah.
Or just that one building?
No, just the one building. We're gonna develop the other side, develop the southerly building as it stands. Um, and then the, the northerly building, um, the, the footprint won't change, just the, the building. And then the northerly building, the footprint won't change, just the building layout is actually really conducive to what we want to do. So the, you know, the way the parking is, everything is fine, so we're just looking for a change of use as opposed to, you know, changing, altering the plan.
And then you're going to lease out the southern building to whoever you can find?
That's right, yeah. So that's, you know, we are, we think it's a really cool, what's come out of COVID. So that second floor is two five-bedroom apartments, our plan there would be to do to rez over a commercial use or a kind of a live-work situation, which we think will go really well, based on what's happening with COVID and you know, so do it like a top-bottom, so you work on the first floor, live on the second floor. And that's, that's what the thought would be there. And just on a side note, both of these buildings will be primary power would be solar and battery with backup to the grid.
I would think what you want to do is probably less intense than any a lot of other businesses. Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Refresh my memory, where is this again? Where's it, this is Roberta's property? Yes. Okay.
Front Street, yes.
Front Street.
I'm sorry, John.
That takes
Yeah, right, one time?
That takes
IBM, he rented a space and he was doing really very fancy chemistry lab. It was very, maybe, I don't know whether he's still there, you know? But he was inventing some kind of molecule, then, you know, that's electronic application and medical, both together.
Okay.
Or somewhere else.
So this is, this is to be built, right? This is, this is That's right. And does Labriol still have another piece down there, John or Robin, I think? Right there, where, yes, just south of it. Just south of it, okay, all right. And if you see that U-turn there, we did the U-turn in order to accommodate that site. Because there's some kind of a paper road or something back in there, right? That's exactly right. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So Keith, are you gonna keep these plans?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yeah, they have no work, that's why we're attracted to the site. They happen to work really, really well for what we have planned. So, you know, there's no alterations to the site. This is actually for reference, right across from the bus depot, for the total, was total bus now? That's directly across the street from them.
Yeah.
Well
John, from your standpoint, the use, does the use fall into the transitional zone?
Well, it's not, it's not anticipated in the transitional zone, but, you know, I think this use fits in in the underlying zone. But since you've used the transitional zone, I think what you should do is just do a very, you know, a short one-page resolution that establishes that on this site plan pursuant to the transitional zone that was approved, you're allowing this use for this building. I think that's all you need to do. And it's really a formality in keeping how you've been using the transitional zone in the past.
I think that makes sense to me.
I agree.
Any issues from the board?
No. I just, I just want to point out for the man behind the curtain, I just got a text message that the computer audio is choppy and keeps dropping in and out, so.
From who?
Mr. Grace texted me, so I don't know if it's our computer audio is not, is popping up. So I don't know if Tom could do it.
Tom Cianella's saying that's internet audio.
Internet, yeah. But
Can't wait for these, can't wait for these zooms to be over, guys, you know?
I hear you, Keith.
I, I, I think it's fine. What do you guys think?
I have no problems.
I have no problem.
I have no problems. I love the project. I think it's great. It's exactly the type of things that we're trying to attract to the town and it also, not for nothing, we're not even attracting because you guys are residents of the town. So I think that's you know, double play from our standpoint. So, John, if we can, could we task you, your office with drafting the rezo that you feel is necessary, to make sure that it touches upon the right points and then we'll move it forward?
No problem.
Okay?
Okay.
All right.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for staying up with us.
No worries. Happy New Year, everybody.
Happy New Year. Thanks for what you do.
Thank you.
All right, so we're gonna go, now, John, you can jump ahead to the next thing I know you're excited about. So I wanted to bring this back, I wanted to bring this to the board. Local waterfront revitalization plan is something that's been on the radar for more than a year now. Honestly, with everything that happened and transpired last year, it just, we just never had time to focus on it, but one of my New Year's resolutions this year, and especially since when we spoke with the LaBerge group about one of our grant applications, we had specifically touched upon the LWRPs and the LWRP committee, which they felt and agreed would be very helpful and enhance our overall application. So I think this is an important thing for us to pursue. I want to just bring in John and Robin for them to provide their insight on this as well. John? Robin?
Robin, you want to say anything?
Sure. Well, Matt, what Matt is saying is just so true, that you need to have a committee and you need to have a plan so that when you write the grant application, you're implementing parts of the plan. When we did the application for Mohegan Lake, now, two years ago, we didn't actually have a plan. We had an idea of things we want to do at the lake, but we don't really have a master plan of, you know, steps we want to implement, whether short-term or long-term. And it just shows that you have a path that you want to keep, you know, achieving those different goals and it would be not just for Mohegan Lake, but for all the lakes on the list. And I think what we've been trying to do is maybe have a larger committee that steers than, maybe has some smaller breaks off into smaller committees that can steer, you know, the different lakes and the needs of the different lakes.
To be clear for the public and also for the board, if you don't know, in order to be able to apply for the LWRP, you have to be designated by the state and put on the inland waterway list. The state legislature has approved a number of lakes here in the town of Yorktown as inland waterways. So this is, this is our way of trying to capitalize off of that designation so that it actually benefits the town. And so, you know, Senator Harkman and Assemblyman Byrne have added just last year some additional waterways on the south side of town. The four that I think are the biggest ticket items from, that we're looking at initially is obviously Mohegan, you have Sparkle, you have Osceola, and then you also have, what was the fourth one that we were talking about, guys? Junior, thank you. And Junior Lake. So those would be the four focus, initial focus areas. We've spoken, I spoke to the Parks and Rec Commission, they are very supportive and interested. I spoke with the MLID, they're very supportive and interested in participating. So there seems to be a good level of support from other agencies within the town. And I think people recognize the value of it. And so I wanted to bring it to the board and have a conversation and see if we had any questions or thoughts on it.
Would this be like a master plan for the lakes?
Yeah, which is one of the, it is, it definitely is, which is another reason why we wanted, we thought it would be a good timing since we're doing these overlay districts. So you can, you can have them coincide, especially for like Lake Osceola. So that's why we think it's just from a timing standpoint, even makes more sense. But these things, you can focus on environmental remediation, which we know our lakes, all of our lakes need right now. Recreational use, economic development, so if you want to talk about that Osceola corridor on East Main Street, this would, you know, depending on the plan, this could address that. And so, yeah, they're almost, I don't want to say mini-master plans, but that's that's what they're gonna be looking at, is how we can either environmentally remediate or improve recreation or help foster additional economic development in these, in these specific areas for the specific lakes.
Now, you would bring in the residents of the different areas surrounding the lake, I would assume.
Yeah, so that was one of the, that was one of the challenges, I don't want to say challenges, that was one of the conversations that we had with LaBerge, which was, do we do one larger committee? Or do you do four, you do separate committees for each neighborhood that would be impacted? And I think what we've, what we want to start with initially, to what Robin's point was, is is a larger look at it on a macro level, but then also have these breakout groups that address each individual area. So obviously, and even though we're one town, but the needs of, or the focus of Sparkle Lake is gonna be very different than and Mohegan Lake is gonna be very different than Osceola, and Osceola is gonna be very different than Junior. So you know, so it's gonna be, it's gonna be an evolving topic of conversation and an evolving process. But I think from our standpoint, from our staff standpoint and from our consultant's standpoint, the important thing is that we engage in the process. And we start getting this moving in the positive direction so we can capitalize on these designations.
I agree, but I would agree only if that we engage the communities surrounding the lake. I think while we are well-intentioned, it is the community around the lake that, that we need to be focused on and see what they're, what they want.
Absolutely. And we want to make sure that they all, and we want to all but guarantee that everyone's gonna have a seat at the table when we go through this process.
Okay.
Great, great leaders in the community, like a Ken Belfer, who is so knowledgeable, that I think his knowledge is gonna benefit every lake community in the town of Yorktown. So that's why I think it's important for us to put people together and then have them empower them to go into the individual neighborhoods and individual communities to have these breakout sessions with the individual lake communities in the town.
There was a lake committee. And Ken was on that committee, so you might want to get from him whether or not members of the different areas were on the committee with him.
That's a great point. Awesome. That's a great starting point. Yes, Councilman Lacterman?
Well, you know, I seem to remember you bringing this forward, actually before you even ran for office with the the local waterfront revitalization and the committee. I do remember you saying the committee should be people from, you know, from the lakes that are there and
Yep.
You know, I just, you know, it's unfortunate we're talking about it two years after you you tried bringing it around the first time, and I know that there was a little resistance, but, you know, I'm hoping that that we could, you've done a lot for the, you know, ecologically for our town and you definitely have that as your focus. I think that, you know, I always joke with my daughter that that's the age group. You know, when she was in Germany, she had no problem with having to recycle thirty-seven different things, including all their garbage and bring it bring it to the recycling dump, and I think that's just how you guys were raised and I just think this is wonderful. I'm very happy. I know somebody, Byrne and Terrence and now Pete Harkman, Senator Harkman, have worked on trying to help Yorktown with this project. I know you've really been for us as well, so.
Let me just tell you, I sat with the board when the board was talking about what's that park we owned around, own around Sparkle, Mohegan Lake?
Rock Hill? The Rock Hill Park?
No.
Your Hall?
Yeah, the first time we ever spoke about that, we were overrun in the boardroom.
Oh, yeah, listen, I get it, but
Assume that we were doing something to ruin their community.
That's not what we're trying to do here. We're actually trying to enhance it and that's why it's focused on environmental remediation. But there are other things, there are other things that we're gonna be able to also take advantage of. You know, again, you look at Sparkle Lake, you know, if we want, you know, first off, sewers, sewers is one of the things. Yeah, and sewers is one of the things that, that, you know, we've seen LWRPs identify and work on. So when we talk about, we just talked about sewers over at up and around Lake Osceola, this could be a great catalyst and avenue for us to have those conversations and, and maybe get support from our partners and government on a state, on a state level. So it just, I think it just opens up more doors, but it also fosters great conversations about other things that we can be doing for our lake communities and making sure that we're maximizing our natural resources.
So when, when the people will have some hope of getting the sewer in Sparkle Lake?
It's a great question. We've had very, very productive conversations already this year. And I think that the county is in a very good position. I personally spoke with the DEP just today. They are in an equally positive position and so we were nearing the really the part of negotiating with the county to release, start releasing, you know, funds for us to go execute the project. So, but I think, but in all fairness, I still think it's gonna be probably two years before we start seeing a shovel on the ground, just being fully transparent about that, but we are getting much, much closer to seeing real action on the Hallicks Mill Sewer Extension Project. But that's a great question, Councilman Patel, thank you.
Because somebody said, you know, like ten years ago, you will have it within the next two years, years or so, you know? So we have the money and we can move.
Well, the good news is we've got the commitment on the ten million. We've got, we've had a great conversation today with DEP on on utilizing a portion of that ten million for the next engineering phase of the project. So those are all positive steps that we continue to have with, with our partners in government, and I think we're getting much, much closer to seeing tangible results. Okay, so we're good with LWRPs? Another LWRP committee? No other thoughts or questions from the board? No? Going once, going twice, sold. Okay. Let's move on to some of our applications. We have a series of one, two, three applications. And I want to thank again all of our applicants and our department heads for staying up with us. We're gonna begin with twenty-sixty Allen Avenue. Welcome back our building inspector, we have our town engineer, of course, our members of our planning department. Do we have either Mr. Burilli or Mr. Penny with us? See, someone's trying to connect.
I think they're usually together for this, because I don't know if Lou figures out how to use the computer.
Okay.
I think he's in Tommy's class with that.
Tommy, I can't laugh at you since I've been known to kind of reply no to Matt on some of his stuff that I was going to do.
Easy there, Ed. Easy, Ed. Good evening.
Do we want to move, do we have Michael Grace on? Diana, just, maybe we can, oh, wait, here we go. I see, I see them now, never mind. Sorry for the lateness of the hour, but appreciate your time. You wanted, can you hear us?
Are you on with us?
Yes, yes, we are.
Just got audio. Thank you. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening. My apologies for the lateness of the hour. Thank you for your time. Can you walk us through briefly what you're trying to accomplish at twenty-sixty Allen Avenue? And what the applicant, you're applying for to discussion about an application for wetland permit and tree permit?
Wetland permit?
Yeah.
I don't know why. Oh, I didn't know we were applying for wetland, I'm sorry, little thrown for that one. Swift, because we're doing a single-family house, a small third of an acre lot, we have to put in eighteen storm tech water treatment systems. And we went through with the town engineer and I think we're all on the same page now. And this is just, I'm pretty sure, just a formality at this point.
Can I ask a question? You're on a third of an acre?
Yep.
And you can't do septic on a third of an acre, can you?
Well, it's sewer there.
It's sewer there, okay.
Yes. It's sewer and water on Allen.
All right.
But this is a set of lots, right? Half of this first lot?
This is a single-family lot, yes.
Yeah, this, I mean, divided into two, right?
No. It's always been one, it's always been one lot.
Oh, so it's
If I could just give a little background to the board here. This is a ten thousand square foot lot. The current zoning in this area is twenty thousand square feet. So these folks work with John Landy and the ZBA and to get a variance. And there was a second ten thousand square foot lot right next to this property site that Phil Sanders of RPG came to the town board maybe two years ago to get approval. He also got a variance to develop, you know, a ten thousand square foot lot. So these, the Panbar developer here, they're proposing, again, a modest-sized home on the lot, ten thousand square foot. There are steep slopes, so, you know, from Allen Avenue, the site slopes very steeply downhill. And the property that was previously developed, when they went through their variance process, the ZBA had asked that they put in a lot of underground stormwater storage units so there would not be any impact to the properties on the so there would not be any impact to the properties on the other side, on the downhill side. So I did work with John Barrell, Lou Panny, and their engineer, Jack Correll, to come up with a similar type of a system here. And as Lou mentioned, there's a series of eighteen underground stormwater detention units that would basically hold water, would take water from the driveway, from the roof, gutters and leaders, and, you know, let that water infiltrate into the ground. And along the rear property line, similar to what was done next door, they would put in a planted berm. So again, to reduce, you know, stormwater runoff from running down the hillside.
John, this is one of those lots that would never, that would not come to planning board because it was probably a piece of an old subdivision, am I correct?
Yes, ma'am. Well, it's from an old subdivision, but improvement, an improvement plan, if it was ever done, does no longer exist, so therefore we don't, there's no approval layout, so we don't we don't stay involved in that. I hope that's not me. I don't think so.
I hope that's not me either.
Smoke alarm going off?
No, it was an old subdivision that there was an approved improvement plan, of course, planning board could see it, but in this case, there was none.
Right. Michael, you remember what we talked about when they're building, what we're gonna ask them to do since they're on that turn as well? In terms of making sure that they notify the neighborhood about when they're out there working and that they don't. And I know you notified the school district, but I think what I asked you the last time to get them, to get the other developer to hire a police officer while they're bringing their trucks in or whatever?
That was a, that was a condition that was incorporated into the prior development, yes. That there's a significant amount of cutting, you know, removing dirt here to get all this foundation in and to get the underground stormwater units. And so you had asked, and we did adopt that into the approval resolution.
All right, did we refer this out yet? Because I don't see any.
No, it has not been, it has not been referred out.
All right, so let's refer it out.
I have no problem.
What's gonna happen with the driveway?
Well, the driveway is a very steep slope. It's ten percent, which is the maximum without town board approval. But they have, they have made it into a ten percent slope driveway. So the drainage that would be collected from the driveway would go into these underground stormwater units that I mentioned earlier.
Okay, we'll refer it out. Any other comments from the board? No?
Just, I just one thing. I think, I think there was specific things laid out here for timing of the removal of soil, et cetera, et cetera. I believe it was already in place, if I'm not mistaken. That was one of the conditions of construction here, so maybe not, it may be something these gentlemen don't have to do at this point. Not that they don't have to do it, but it's another, you know, step they don't have to take because it's already in place.
Michael, can you look at when you come back to us with your recommendations? Can you tell us if that's correct?
I'm sorry, I was just trying to put, I was gonna put the plan up on the screen. Can I just do that real quick? Get a quick look?
Yeah.
Okay, so on this site, which hopefully everyone can see now, we got Allen Avenue along the bottom.
Right.
And then you have this driveway. All these dash lines are the topographical grade lines, so you could see how steep the site is, is basically the entire, the entire site.
Yeah.
Here's your three-bedroom house, and then the underground stormwater units in the rear. And then this is that planted berm they were gonna put along the rear property.
Yeah, because there was much discussion at one point in time about the underground infiltrators, et cetera, that were gonna be put in there. Who was gonna make sure that they were watched over, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I remember there was quite, quite a conversation on that. I don't recall how it ended at this point. Do we have documentation on that from the last soiree with this piece of property?
That would be Michael.
I can get the conditions to the board of what was done on the prior site. Usually with these underground infiltrators, you know, there's not too much you can do as far as like yearly inspections. But I can see if we put that in there, a stormwater maintenance agreement on the prior site. I think that's what you're referring to, Tom.
Yeah, because that, if I'm not mistaken, Mike, that was something that, that, that I don't know whether the other person had to follow through with and didn't, or that was supposed to be incorporated in this particular lot. You know, maybe it's something these gentlemen don't have to follow through with. It's already done.
Okay.
All right, so it might be something that's already there, you know, because I've been, we've been dealing with this site for, what, three years now?
Well, this is, this is.
Explain the topo on this site.
What's that?
The site we dealt with, Tom, was the site to the right. This is a new, new site.
This is a different one?
Yeah.
Can you explain the topo on this site, Michael?
Yes, so the Allen Avenue, let me see if I can blow this up a little bit here. So you can see the dash lines are existing grades. And these are two-foot contours. So, you know, just from like Allen Avenue up at the top here at the property line, we have two, four, six, eight, ten, twelve, fourteen, sixteen, eighteen, twenty. So over twenty-two feet of grade change from the front of the site to the rear.
Oh my God.
So they're taking advantage, would be like a walkout, you know, lower level. And then I guess it's a story and a half from looking at it on Allen Avenue. So they're using this cross slope to get the driveway in, which again, I think makes good sense. They're putting in a retaining wall so they can make that maximum slope of ten percent for the driveway. It's a two-car garage. They're gonna basically re-level the grade, you know, along the both sides. And then the rear is where they're going to excavate, so that's why there has to be a lot of dirt removed from the site as was done on the other property.
Yeah.
To put in these underground units. So this is like a three- or four-foot excavation just to get, get these units in. Has a gravel subbase. And this will hold the water and allow it to infiltrate into the dirt. They did, I believe they did some testing to confirm the infiltration rate to make sure that these units will be very effective.
So this has a greater topo than the other one we worked on, right?
Very similar. You can see on the right-hand side here, the same grades running through. So it's something like twenty-two, twenty-four foot grade change from the front of the property to the rear.
Okay.
My mistake then. I thought, I thought we were dealing with the same piece of property.
Oh, he's already built.
That's what I thought. I thought something happened there.
No, Phil Sanders did complete that house.
Yeah.
My mistake. I'm sorry.
Nice. Okay.
I'm sorry.
Quick question, just out of curiosity. Did you get, did you get your zoning board variances?
Oh, we did. Yes. Yes, we did.
Did you give us a copy of it?
We didn't get the actual copy yet. It hasn't been read into the minutes yet. We'll get it at the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. I just want to state one thing. I'm not gonna be taking the fill off of the lot. My intention is to dig out the stormwater stuff and build a ramp up to the street, put all my stormwater in before I even put the foundation for the house in. Everything's gonna stay on the lot as I build it. I'm not gonna be going into the road. I'm gonna try and build myself a ramp right into the property, right from the jump.
Well, see, the issue that I had is that Allen Avenue is a very small street in the area where you are.
Yes. I want to do everything in the lot as much as I can.
But you will have trucks coming to the lot, am I, is that, am I correct?
Yes, they will come to the lot, but they're gonna go into the site. My intention is to make a ramp so they can go into the site.
Okay. We can, okay. I'm still going to put it into resolution.
Fine.
Yeah, you do something different.
No, I understand. That's fine. I just wanted you to be aware that my intention is not to build like the other guy who put the house up and then the stormwater. I'm gonna go on water first and work my way out of the lot.
Okay, okay.
So.
Okay.
Then, that's all.
You still, and considering that they did get their ZBA approval, I think the board still wants to refer out, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. So then we'll make a motion to have the clerk refer out the application.
Motion?
Kevin?
All in favor? Aye.
Aye, I'm sorry.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And then we'll work with our town clerk to set the public hearing. Okay?
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. All right, next we're gonna talk six seventy-five Solma River Road. This is a zoning board referral for a special use permit. I believe we have
Mr. Grace.
Michael Grace joining us. Connecting to audio. Good evening. Mr. Grace, how we doing? You're muted. You're on mute.
You're on mute.
You're on mute. Can you unmute yourself? Bottom left corner?
Oh, he's Tommy's friend.
Wow, I'm getting beat up here tonight. John, don't you say a word.
I was just gonna say something about that street up in the north part of town, but I'm not gonna.
Michael, unmute yourself.
Yeah, he's trying to unmute himself. If you go to Zoom, I don't know if you can go to Zoom and then go to the bottom left corner. There should be a microphone. You click on mute. Yeah, okay.
It's not doing it.
Click on it.
Matt, why don't you run across the street? One on mute for him. Diana, could you give, could you invite him to unmute? That might actually, he might be able to do it.
Connecting to audio now. I've already tried that twice.
Okay.
If you can call in? I don't know if he's tried that.
And he's connecting. It says connecting.
Yeah. Been there, done that, I think, though.
Oh, okay. It's that ni, ni.
Speak, Mike. Now.
You're off mute.
Let's go completely out and come back.
He's forty-five minutes behind, or he's fallen asleep?
We're getting there. We're getting there. Just getting.
Yeah, I recognize that we're late.
Matt here.
Yes.
This is a long, long agenda.
I know it is.
Am I talking about one o'clock? We don't want to be here to one o'clock.
No, no, I know.
Call in.
I think Mike's.
Michael, there's also a phone-in number, so you can call in and still be on at the same time.
What, you know?
In the invite that you received via email, there's a phone number for, to call in. You can call in at the same time as being on video.
All I know is in twenty-seven minutes, Alice, I'm done, because when they draw the mega-million numbers, I'm out of here.
Don't forget, I get twenty-five percent.
Wait a minute. Matt, I haven't sent you your note yet, so.
Oh, you haven't?
No, no, I'll fax it to you.
Oh, thanks.
Michael, it's.
You want to, while we get Michael on, John and Robin, do we want to just hop ahead to the request or proposals on all call services? This way we can chop this.
Or you can go to eighteen seventy-five Brookdale, that's fine. Whichever one you want to do.
Diana, can you let eighteen seventy-five Brookdale in?
Tell Michael to come across the street and sit with you.
I'm gonna email you the phone number, Michael, or text message you the phone number.
All right, we have, we're gonna jump ahead to eighteen seventy-five.
Go Rena.
Brookdale. Rena, good evening. Sorry for the lateness of the hour.
Hey, Joe.
For some reason, it didn't add what the discussion was on the agenda. This is regarding what lands in MS4 stormwater permits. Mr. Rena, can you brief us on the application, please?
Sure. This is a site that we received a wetland permit and site plan approval back in two thousand seventeen. It was, the client was the original property owner who owned the property for sixty years or so, and then anyway. Fast forward ahead, a house was built on the property and the current owner of the property purchased the house from the builder. Mr. Almata.
Evening, Mr. Almata.
Hi, I'm here.
How are you?
Good evening. I'm doing good. How are you everybody doing?
We're good.
Good, good.
So in February of last year, Mr. Almata applied for a wet, a tree permit and wetland permit to cut down seventy-seven trees, some of which were in the wetland buffer. A conditional permit was issued in May of two thousand twenty, which approved the cutting of the seventeen trees. And they were supposed to be cut to grade with no stumps removed. However, the stumps, some of the stumps were removed and there was some additional land disturbance as a result and a violation was issued in August of this year.
How many trees did he cut down?
Seventy-seven.
Seventy-seven trees.
And how many were approved for him to cut down?
Well, I don't know how many were cut down, but seventy-seven were approved.
Seventy-seven trees are approved to be cut?
Right.
Okay.
So at this point, we're, we're, we were working with Mr. Almata and the engineering department to remedy the violations and bring, you know, bring the site up to compliance. At the same time, dealing with improvements that Mr. Almata wants to make on his, make on his property. So if we provided an updated wetland permit, which I need to update again because I realize some things I need to add to that. But essentially what was, what he's looking to do here is, and I don't know if anyone has seen the property, but he wants to complete the work that he started, which we stopped, stopped from doing from, due to the stop work order, get the site in order, get it properly graded. There are some retaining walls which he has building permits for, and he wants to construct those retaining walls. As part of that, there is some, there is some additional wetland disturbance proposed on the previous approval. When we first got the site approved, there was approximately eight hundred and seventy-five square feet of wetland disturbance that was approved. And Mr. Almata is proposing an additional fifteen hundred plus square feet of disturbance. In addition to that work, that's occurring on the right side of the house, where he'd also like to place a shed. In addition to that work, the neighbors to the rear of the property, almost every property has a drainpipe of one size or another. Size or another, or multiple drain pipes that that drain onto onto the property. He is looking to. Install a drainage system to collect these pipes. And uh properly properly discharge them into a level, a a stone level spreader. Which would then provide recharge to the wetland. That that's basically running the entire um backside behind the house. As you get towards the corner on Underhill, uh that that property line there that butts the neighbors, he has the same situation. And wants to collect those pipes and tie them into um the drainage system that it's out in Brookdale. That drainage system was installed as part of the original approval for the site. Let's also expand his driveway to provide itself a little more parking area. Uh in in general, complete, complete the lawn. Area and grade it out properly, fine grade it and and get it seeded and established and whatnot. I mean, we're not gonna be doing that now, but. In the in the uh near future, hopefully the, you know, within the next three months, he'll be able to get to that.
About a whole new site plan?
What's that?
It sounds like you're talking about a whole new site plan from what you got. Where did he get the site plan from?
We we put together a site plan, Alice, um which we submitted. I could bring it up if you want.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine. And I just, can you just, while you're bringing it up, or maybe one of our department heads can let us know? So I just wanna make sure we're straight on this because there was a stop work order issued in August.
Right.
So, but it is, I'm still unclear, though. Because if a stop order was issued, but a permit was issued prior, can you just re walk me through that again?
I can give you a little bit of background here. Um, originally, we were contacted um for a tree removal permit. And um, the bulk of the trees that that he wanted to remove were on the left side of the house. And um, a permit was granted for seventy-seven trees to be removed. With no ground disturbance, the trees were were to be removed to grade. Now.
When was that tree permit issued?
Uh I believe that was in May of two thousand twenty.
Yep, May.
So. We we, at the time that the uh Mr. Almeida had hired a tree company, we were working with that tree company. And we had asked, you know, what what was the reason for all these trees to be removed? And um we understood, you know, he has young children that he was he was concerned about some of the trees. And a lot of the the trees were smaller, so they weren't all regulated trees, which would be eight inches and above. Be that as it may, the the trees um were removed, um that permit was closed um back in May of two thousand twenty. But then more work was done on the property and that's that was the subject of a stop work order issued in August. Now, basically, the entire site had been disturbed at that point, so the this the tree stumps had been removed. And the areas were being regraded to level the property. So basically, he would have more usable usable land. And that was done to the left of the house and to the right of the house. Um, and I I think Joe mentioned, the wetlands on this property are to the right of the house.
Right here.
And there was a very small um disturbance of the wetland um for the original house construction. And then the house itself was built in the one hundred foot buffer area. So, um, you know, the the work that was done to the right of the house, um, basically. You know, damaged the wetlands, it damaged the the drainage ditch that runs along Brookdale Street. And um the drainage pipes that Joe alluded to from the rear properties. Um, you know, the water that used to run into the wetland area uh was rerouted. And so the wetlands were were basically drying drying out for the last uh, you know, two, three months here. And um so we we would like to see as part of this new site plan. Uh where he's trying to ask for permission to authorize what was already done. And to to do ultimately, I guess, some some retaining walls and some more leveling of the property. Um, some some plan to restore the wetland to the right of the property.
Agreed.
So we did prepare a review memo and that was one of our comments.
I know that's, we've heard from several of the residents over there, specifically on that side of the house. Are not appreciative of. Of the current state that it was left in, and so I think restoration is um understood.
This was a too small part, uh in a uh parcel making it to one, right? Is it the same property?
Yes. A couple of tax lots.
So essentially, the wetlands, the wetlands uh permit is for the work that's already been done.
Uh yes, and also, and and again, this is where I I mentioned before. I I'm realizing, um as I was uh writing, writing up my my notes here. That in in that, um, in the request for the wetland permit. So the drainage work that we're looking to do along the the rear property line here, picking up these pipes and putting them into a level spreader here. And and these retaining walls in the front here, as well as this work in the front of the house. Is all within the buffer. So that should, I should have, I should have looped that, you know. Included that in the the wetland permit portion, so um. Not only is that covered as part of the excavation permit and the stormwater permit, but it's also part of the wetland permit.
Joe, have you looped conservation board into this as well?
Uh I'm sorry, Alice, I didn't hear what you said.
Um, have you talked to anyone on the conservation board?
Uh no, Alice, this is the first uh meeting we've had.
Okay. Okay, sorry.
Yep.
I think we need to refer this out.
Oh, absolutely, it needs to be referred out. And 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 I know that residents, uh like I said, there are neighbors who want to also provide their input as well as as what they would. Be part of the remediation plan, so I think we need to afford them that opportunity. So let's make a motion for the clerk to refer out to all necessary agencies, and then we'll set a public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. Just uh just to help the clerk, uh I think that was uh Councilman Lachterman uh with the first and Councilman Roker with the second. Okay?
Thank you both. Thank you, gentlemen.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.
Mr. Almeida.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have Mr. Grace back?
Yes, I'm, I don't know if I'm unmuted.
Yeah.
Oh, there you go.
You're there.
Here.
Damn it.
Okay, so this is in regards to the Sarlo property, six seventy-five Solmo River Road. This is a ZBA referral for a special use permit. I believe when we left off the conversation, that we're on the same page here? I know it's late.
Yeah.
When we left off on the conversation, I said I wanted to do a site visit. Um, I know there, I think there were a few other board members who wanted to revisit. I did visit the site with uh with John Tegger. Uh we we went through it. Uh I don't know if any of the board members have returned.
I did.
I did not, but I remembered very well.
Okay, Mr. Grace, anything that you wanna add or present?
No, look, it's it's a uh, it essentially is very high bargain special use permit. It's it's almost akin to a use variance. Uh with that understood, that's why I uh basically uh. Thought it would be prudent for you guys to visit the site, and I don't think that the site is really incompatible with what the applicant is looking to do. It is a uh use that is very desperately needed uh up around here. As there is very little, if any, areas to um do this type of outdoor storage. Uh I uh I wish I would have accompanied you to the site visit, but I think that if you uh uh did notice, it's very well kept. An organized site. Um, and I think the only real uh objection, if any, should be from DEP. And my understanding is that they uh don't have strong objections to it. Um, I uh um, it it doesn't ni- it doesn't fit nicely into any of the code provisions. I understand that. And that's why it's a bar set high uh for the applicant, but I think that uh. Uh again, it is a much needed um use um i- in the town. So uh, I I really just um kind of with my hat in my hand, trying to beg the board to see if they can. I get behind some type of relief so that you can continue um and maybe uh very well monitored. Uh to address any other concerns that the board may have. So I'm just trying to get a feedback from you guys. Just the way we're going with this, um and if there's a possibility to 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 uh uh do something along the lines of what he's asking for.
John Landy, any any comments from your standpoint?
Well, I I I have no objections to this.
I have a question.
Yes.
Twenty nineteen, um everyone that responded talked about. Um, you're getting approval from the DEP. Have you done that yet?
Uh I I I I may be unmuted, but I can't understand a word you said, Alice. I'm sorry.
I apologize. I said, have you gotten any approval from the DEP?
No, I I I and 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 these are one of these applications, what's the cart and what's the horse?
Oh.
You know, it doesn't make a lot of sense to spend a lot of time and energy in front of the DEP if the town is just not. Understanding that you're really, you know, it doesn't necessarily.
I can't hear you. You're you're a garble.
Oh, God, it 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 doesn't fit into the net, any of the code provisions very well. So it really begins, it is the 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 initial, I think, inquiry here is rather than go through a lot of. Uh 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 procedures with the DEP is to really get the temperature of the board and the town on this one.
I've been up there and I I think my my concern was that the DEP would have issues with that. Um, John, have you been up to the site?
John, which John? We've got two with us right now. Tegger, yeah, John and I went up together.
Let's talk about it.
Talk about the site?
Yes.
Okay, uh, there's there's a lot of stuff being stored there. A lot of stuff there.
A lot of stuff up there.
Uh, you know, I I'm not sure I fully understand what what's supposed to, what is being proposed. Um. It it appeared to me, just from a practical standpoint, it appeared to me that there was a lot of equipment that is not regularly used. Uh, it also seemed as though, you know, there was, maybe they're using them as um, you know, stormwater. Uh measures in some manner of some berms. Some of the firms are made with with logs, you know. Not sure exactly whether there's rhyme or reason to it, so you know, if anything at all went forward on this. I think it definitely could stand some type of cleanup at the very least. And you know that a- any approval, if at all, would have some uh tight conditions on it in terms how, in terms of how it's used.
When he met with us, I thought he spoke about Tommy, I'm gonna ask you to remember, um about allowing trucks to park on his property.
Yeah, and I I think we left him at that point with the with the uh thought of going to. Um, the DEC first, just to find out if there was gonna be, i- 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 what their thought was on it, you know. Because you had trucks up there, you had fertilizer, you had diesel fuel and so on. I don't know if they've done anything different since then.
But, yeah, I. If I if I may, I I couldn't agree more with John Tegger on this one. Um, I I think it is, it it, we have a thresh- threshold issue as to whether or not the. Uh is something that you would be comfortable with on the use, would be outdoor storage. Uh I I think it's some, there's some organic waste being uh uh processed there and and uh these uh vehicles. Uh, but I think you'd have, and and I I don't, personally, I don't think it's a bad spot because it's fairly well hidden. Um, and it's again, it's a very, it's it's a use of very high demand around here because there's very little of it.
Right.
Uh but I think I think that, and I think you could make it work, but you're gonna have to, I I think he's gonna have to be under some, you know, type. Uh 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 conditions and restrictions as to how how to make it work. And I I think that if the board would be amenable to the idea of allowing the use, I certainly will then. Stress to my um client to make the investment in creating a really possible site plan for everyone. Is that, but if it's, it it, you know, it's one of these things, look, the the coach doesn't really allow it, so it's a big, it's a stretch. The board is disinclined, uh there's nothing else to talk about, but if the board is ha- has some feeling that it may be worth lots of pursuit. I think we could make, I think my my client in conjunction with the town can really make it work. And then uh it provide a much necessary uh service uh in 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 the town because it's it's definitely needed.
He's a very nice gentleman.
You control it, uh you know, to control what's going on up there. And keep a close eye on it.
John, I don't think that's our job. I think it's DEP's job. It's their reservoir. That's right there.
Yep.
And I think it's up to them.
Alright, so if 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 I can, if I can appease whatever objections or concerns the DEC would have. Well, they then you guys consider, you know, al- allowing some kind of a relief to let it go ahead, because then I'll pursue it that way. I have no problem doing, I I just, you gotta understand, you know, what would become difficult with these types of applications is who do you go to first? And and and. It's gonna get shut down. You might as well get shut down early in the process rather than spending a lot of time and money on it.
Michael, I think I think that that's that's something that was just said before. When we left him the last time. Uh, we were am- amenable to doing something if DEP didn't have a problem.
Okay, I I I came in, I'm I'm a, I'm late to this application in the sense that I know he pursued it on his own. In conjunction with Joe Rena, I think they, I think it was, the idea was on a, on a, from a legal point of view. It was an uphill climb. Uh, I I don't know if I can help that, but.
What would the difference be if he owned um owned and lived on that property? And owned a business where he brought his trucks home?
Uh, it it it, Alice, it's it's really not a use that's allowed.
Okay.
Uh you know, quite frankly, it's just not, he he has uh this pretty non-conforming multi-family house on one of those lots. Uh, these are two residential lots that could, I guess, theoretically support single-family homes. Um, I I don't know whether that is a uh a more attractive or less attractive use for DEP purposes of DEP. Uh I I think it just became uh maybe habitual that uh he puts stuff back there. Because nobody really cared and uh it had this multi-family house there, so maybe you could put it under the guise of that use. Parking vehicle. There also is this issue as to whether or not you need the main use to have the accessory use. And that's a debate that I've been having with the ZBA for decades now. Uh, all that aside, I I, you know, to be perfectly frank with all of you, I I, you know, it's it's a use that's uh. You know, essentially, in in front of the ZBA, it would be akin to getting a use variance. In front of the town board, if the town board was amenable to it, then it may be some something in between, getting a use variance and and, you know, maybe. Uh you know, some type of zoning amendment or taking a look at it. It is something that is. Is a- again, it's a use that is is rare, it's almost non-existent in the town because we kind of. It it it, town code kind of eliminates it completely.
That is, that property is in one of my favorite districts, the country commercial. And and that happens to be a beautiful district, and so the idea of looking at a lot of. Uh big trucks parked there, I don't know.
John, you've been trying, Tegger, what do you got, John?
No, I'm just gonna reiterate, and I I think this is on its face, everyone understands this, but I mean, the problem you have, it's not allowed in the zone. And you know, you have, you have to think about um the pre- you know precedent that you would set.
Yeah.
And and you also have to think about, in terms of going to the DEP, you know, that's a procedural conundrum there. DEP, I don't think is going to be um really uh um into telling you much without a real application. And I don't think they're going to field the real application without the municipality having an application in front of them. So I mean, you you end up with this, you know, chicken and egg situation, so. if it's not allowed in the zone, I don't know how you take an application in order to enter secret to refer it to D E C. And I don't think D E P is going to give you really too much uh without um, you know, that type of formal referral, so you know, just procedurally, it's difficult.
John, you're you're hundred percent right. It's 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 very difficult to move this thing along given it's 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 present zoning designation, but it it really is going to take, it it, again, it's, I think the threshold question is the is, does the board feel um that um this may uh may be uh something that they'd be comfortable with? I think as far as setting precedent for the future, you, there's enough uh distinguishing characteristics of this property that can easily distinguish it from any, any, so that it won't be presidential setting in terms of whatever you do. Um, a- again, it, you you you, I think you have to pay cognizance of the fact that this type of ability to store some, some, some vehicles uh it it does not exist in town period anywhere, and we've had, constantly had this battle, John, with the do you need, uh, I I know I've got somebody else looking for doing, doing something like.
Not his vehicles, Michael.
What?
These are not his vehicles.
That's, yeah, right. I mean, that's.
He's 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 allowing them to 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 stay there so he can get money. So let's.
Yes.
Let's not associate that these are his vehicles.
No, no, I I I I don't think I, I don't think I said that they ever were. The third party, absolutely third party.
Yeah, I I don't get that implication.
The issue that you have in town all the time is that you don't have the, there's, you know, you can store, you can do outdoor storage as an accessory use, so you gotta put up a structure. So when you get these vacant lots that, or or vacant areas where they actually can accommodate this type of storage, you actually have to put the building up before you can do the storage. And and we always, we always, with the Z B A, you always have a, you know, go around in this circular argument, oh, I have to put, you know, I could put up a ten by ten shed, and then I can park, but without the ten by ten shed, I can't park, it doesn't make sense. I think, again, the threshold is if you're comfortable with it, we will move ahead. I think we can make it work because of, I think, based upon unique characteristics of this property, you could make it really work. You can make it work, and it has been working because it was under the radar until, I guess, somebody must have that, you know, a neighbor or somebody complained, other than that, nobody would have known it even existed. So it can work.
Neighbor complaint.
John, are there, are there other country commercial zones, I mean, I'm just on a precedent-setting uh standpoint. Are there other country commercial zones that you foresee similar applications could be submitted for?
Well, all around Lake Osceola is country commercial. And you already, you have a couple of properties up there that have been problem properties that are doing just that, and they're operating outside of, outside of our code. And so that, you know, this precedent would pave the way for them to use that legally and long-term, and I don't know, and I'm not talking about this property. Uh, in terms of uh Lake Osceola, Osceola, I don't know if that's where you want to take it.
Right.
But that, I mean, that's one of the dangers, so.
Right, and I think, I think, I think one of the solutions and and which may be, you want to put on the table is that you you may want to, you may want to amend your schedule of regulations to allow this to happen somewhere in town, rather than basically it not being allowed anywhere in town, which is ki- kind of what you have right now. Uh, I don't think this is a country commercial zone where uh the country commercial, I think, is along one twenty-nine. This is property that is actually set back from the country commercial, so my belief is is that it's an R-zone. I guess residential.
It's still, still, it's still the same, uh, you know, still the same concern up, right? I mean, whether it's country.
Absolutely, absolutely, no question. The ideal situation would be to uh to amend the schedule of regulations to see where this may be compatible in the town, because uh, I mean, it's no different than what you're doing with the overlays. You have to, you you know, if you don't start having some flexibility in your code, you can basically preclude, you know, some of the things that you actually need.
But why would you wanna, but why would you wanna put that kind of use in a country commercial district?
I I don't, Alice, I don't think you would, and I think, I I think that basically what you're, what you're dealing with is there's certain properties that don't lend themselves to anything. And and it really, I mean, it really is the case, I mean, it, you know, I I I wanted to talk to you guys five minutes about a piece of property up in Mohegan Lake. It's it's commercially zoned, but should be residential because it's not gonna be, ever be developed. You know, you you basically sterilize a property by zoning it what it is. And and this is one of these pieces that basically becomes sterilized, which is really nothing you're ever gonna do with it. And 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 it's, and it's vacant land, and it could be, can be put through constructed use without very any much adverse impact to anybody. So it, and you have somebody that's willing to do it and maybe make improvements on it, rather than let it just be fallow, you know, like fallow, so it it it's, it's, you know, it it's, but it takes, you know, this is, you know, it's, look, it's could, would be, it's real easy to say no, and you can do it in five seconds, and you can do it justifiably.
What is this other property zone?
This, this property, I think, is zoned R-one-eighty, I think, I think it's two acres zone along the and the country commercial's in front, because they said that's the restaurant, that's uh old Nadine's, is it Nadine's?
Yeah.
But Jennifer. Jennifer. Uh, you got, yeah.
Now.
Yeah, so you have, you know, it's just making a threshold determination as to whether, you know, you, and I think that's really what it comes down to, there's no- nothing else. It's because saying no is the easiest uh uh route to go here, and it's, and and, you know, quite frankly, when I consult with my clients, you know, I I tell them the bar is set very high to get past that. And 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 so it, you know, what I have taken him on as a client, other than think, well, you know what, you know, I know the town well enough to say it's not a bad idea. It it really isn't a bad idea on a use that's much that's what we need, so it it it's one of these things where you want, you want to take it on, or you don't want to take it on. If you don't want to take it on, it's, you know, a quick no is what I can tell them. Uh, but I, you know, I think the more, you know, the 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 uh you know, we 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 would ask that you you take a, give it some serious thought, and you don't have to do it right now, it's late, you have a long meeting. Um, you know, so whatever you want to do is fine by me, you've got time to think about it, it's fine, it's great, we want want us to come back and do a, tighten it up a little bit, you want us to come back up with D E C if that's possible, without a formal application before you, it's just, or if it's just giving out, not known, then just, you know.
Can I tell you something? Yes, it's, uh, no, it's not easy for me, okay? That may be for you, it's easy, not easy for me. We met your, we met your client. We liked him.
Hey, good guy, hard, hardworking guy. I appreciate that, Alice.
But what, that property, when we went up there, I kind of like was horrified that it's, it's such beautiful property, and it really needed to be, it was really ugly. And I just, and I remember saying to him, you're lucky D E P hasn't come up here.
Yeah, you know, it's funny, though, you you know, to that point, you have, you have D O T using the corner of one twenty-nine and one hundred a- a- as an organic uh waste storage uh uh site.
Well, don't they?
Well, we, and we've been, and when I was supervising, we were asking them to clean that that corner up. And they cleaned it up, and then they dumped more crap there, and they constantly do it, and that's a lot, much more proximate to the water than anything that needs. But but yeah, and and, and I'm, you know, what I'm finding.
Did you hear what he said?
The concept should not be.
John Landy, Alice, or who's?
No, it's John Landy. Um, if he's. Michael, who did you send out there to have D O T clean up the corner?
Uh, I'm sorry, Alice, I'm really, I can't, you know, I don't know what it is.
Who'd you send out to clean up the corner, uh, Mike? Was it?
Uh, we leaned on uh.
Building. Was it code enforcement to clean up the the D O T uh organic waste?
Well, heavily tough because you gotta get the state to do it, so we leaned heavily on them. We finally got them to come down with a chipper, and they chipped it all up, it started to go away. And and then it came all back, it came back again.
Yeah, I don't know if I have the authority to push the state to do that, Matt.
No, I know that, but but my, forget that whole conversation, but the thing I think is interesting is it's one of two things. So either the state's saying it's okay to do that in the proximity to the water, but at the same time, they're not storing trucks there, they're not storing vehicles there.
It's lots, it's from trees.
Organic waste, which I don't think I would have, I don't personally think I have a problem with, but that's not what we're talking about, we're talking about, we're talking about trucks.
Yeah, but the trucks, I I think. I I would argue the trucks are more benign than the organic waste. And 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 because, you know, I I think that that they're absolutely benign. And I think D E P would probably agree with that.
Okay, I I mean, I I can personally say I I'd feel more comfortable if we had some kind of direction from D E P. I mean, that's.
I I I I will make the effort to 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 do that and get something back from them. I I I I, I don't want to be taking the wicked witch's broom, so to.
No, I get it. I mean, I I don't necessarily.
Or they come back, say, well, you know.
Benign than 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 waste yard, but I I just think that D E P's kind of have to weigh in, you know, to to give it some direction.
All right, well, if I, if I, if I read you correctly, and tell me if I'm wrong, at least you're open to further discussion on this, depending what D E P may come back with.
Because if that's the case, I will, that that's, that's fine by me, that's, that's, I think.
What's that, Alice?
I said I didn't say that. You said that.
No, I know, I'm trying to, trying to, trying to get it, you know.
You know, honestly, I I don't see the board jumping up and down saying they want to do it, and I know it's hard to say, to to, I think, Councilman Roker's point. I I don't think that it's, it's necessarily easy to say no.
Yeah.
Uh, because we don't like saying, saying no to a resident, I I, but I don't see the board jumping up and down considering the obstacles that have been put forward and can, and considering, you know, what the application is. Unless, I mean, I'm trying to read the board just as you are, but I don't see anyone.
You know, I gotta, I I gotta say that there is no that type, what they, what he's doing there now, of course, uh, you know, without permit, et cetera, is something that is needed in town. Is that the right place? I don't know. Um, it's I think it would need to be neatened up. I mean, we we got after, we're getting after the person who owns uh where the battery storage is gonna be to neaten up that particular area with the Highline trucks that are there and so forth. Um, and I don't recall exactly what that's classified now, I know it was commercial, then it became office, and now I I don't know where it's at, but anyway. Um, you know, I don't, it's hard to find commercial parking. Actually, that place is far enough off the road where you never really see it from the road, but it does border a reservoir, so I, it's, it's, it's a, it's a balancing act, but you know what, we could monitor it. And and uh.
Who's gonna monitor that, Ed? Me, now, Tommy?
Well, if if.
I I don't think. I I think, I think you, as far as policing it, something policing something that you approved is always, you know, you have to do that every time you approve something, so it's, it's not, it's nothing unique.
Let's.
Uh, and and you certainly, there's certainly all sorts of safeguards you can put in place. I mean, that's not an issue. And really, that's not, I mean, it's it's it's, it's not an issue, especially since, you know, I think you would, you would probably uh, you know, uh, put some, some conditions on there, that would have to be strictly followed, and we we do it all the time.
Right. We do it all the. It still comes down to, it still comes down to the enforcement, and that's, and that's still, I think.
You said something that I'm curious about. Why are there commercial parking spaces in Yorktown?
I'm sorry.
Why are there no commercial parking spaces in Yorktown?
Why are there no commercial parking spaces?
Parking spaces in Yorktown.
Because, because your code uh doesn't really provide for it. You have, if I have a business and I have a commercial vehicle, I can have one on my property. We had the Freihopper's trucks basically around the corner from where you used to live, Alice. The guy with the Freihopper truck.
Right, exactly.
There was this Freihopper truck in his driveway. You know, there's a guy that did floors, uh, standard floors in Mohegan, that was, everybody chases them out because they don't want to wake up and look and see a commercial vehicle in parked in a residential neighborhood. So you 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 ban them from there, you have an outdoor storage for vehicles section, special use permit in your code, which is very uh uh uh, it's it's just a couple of sentences which really doesn't say anything, and I think it's only allowed in a C-three and C-four, and then you get into the situation where you do have outdoor storage as long as you have a main use. So you have to actually build a building to park the vehicles rather than park, you know, so it it, the code, the lan- your lan- the language of the code is just, just doesn't allow it, and nobody, you know, you addressed it because of the obvious, it's not pretty. So you have to, you know, you, so what do you, but but you, and and it used, you know, look, we were an agricultural an agricultural-based town at one point, where all these, with these, that was the, the normal thing, having tractors and pickups and all that, all, all over the place. That's changed, so you have, now you have a suburban flavored town where nobody, everybody frowns on this stuff, which we still, people need their lawns cut, their trees taken down, and they need the contractors to show up to clean the stuff up and blah, 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 and all that stuff, so you need and these guys, you know, so it it's just, your code doesn't provide for it, in short, in short, or and and may, and may be something that you need to look at because, and because it is a desperately needed use.
But you can do that on a commercial zone, in an industrial zone?
Only with this, only with the main use.
Right, if you have a warehouse yourself.
Right.
Yeah, you need the ma- you need the main use.
Okay.
The except.
Sorry, go ahead, Mike.
The code doesn't allow for outdoor storage of vehicles without a main use, except for special codes. I know, you know.
Issue, the main issue is a theoretical one.
I agree.
Do they want to allow as a main use the storage of equipment and/or the parking of cars as a, as a single main use with no other uses? And do they want to allow that in residential zones? I mean, that is, that's the, that's the question here, it's not necessarily about cleaning it up and monitoring, that's practical, that comes after the question that, you know, that after you get to the question, answering the question uh of this land use issue, so.
Yeah, John, I I agree with you, and I I don't, I don't know that you have to, you know, I don't know, you you have to uh uh frame it as being residential zones because you can zone properties, you know, you can do different zoning designations or ac- actually create, you know, a special use uh 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 section that would allow it with with certain requirements of, you know, in in terms of the property itself. So uh, I know you had some stuff up at uh, around Osceola Lake, off the Sixth End, there was an issue up there, right? And you had, you know, what do you?
And it's not, really not allowed, not allowed.
Yeah, and what do you, and what do you have to?
Something's not allowed. Do we just go, okay, you can stay?
No, we have to.
Yeah, we got, what, what about the uh, the golf range off of Lex? Then they come into the storage of vehicles all through there?
Yes. And so they're doing what you, they're, they're doing what you described before. They're establishing a main use by putting an office there, and so the parking, they'll have a little accounting office, as they described it, and then they'll have a seven-hundred car parking lot.
No, I know, that's what.
That's interesting today.
You gotta, you gotta understand, that, that is.
That was denied by me, John. I did not allow that as an accessory use to that.
Yeah, it was before, it was before the planning board, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, but but that, that's the, that's the absurd, that's, that's really what the absurd uh 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 consequences of of the present code. So I put up a ten by ten office and and, you know, and then I get, I get the, I get all the parking I want. Oh, I'll say, you know what, it's it's.
I mean, you can do it by special permit in certain zones.
Yeah, but you.
You got some certainty.
Look, it's a lo- it's a long night for you guys, and I I don't want to beat the dead horse. I I think it's, it's something that, it, again, if you're not, if you're not adverse to it, uh, then I think this will be for the discussion, and that discussion can be, go to D E P, get, get a feeling from them, and then maybe we can fashion a special use code section that can allow this, because it's something that.
I think the way that John Pegeter described it, though, is the first question the board needs to answer. Do you want to set a precedent that allows this type of storage in in residential zones? That's, that's the first question the board has to answer.
Yeah, and I'm saying that.
I already answered it for him.
You you, that, you put it that way, the answer is completely no.
Right, that's the first, that's the first question that the board has to answer. I mean, and and I don't see anyone jumping up and down saying, yeah, that's a great idea.
No, it's not, it's not, I think you have to, because you.
Yeah, okay, so I I mean, I think you got. The next question. But I think, you know, if you really wanted to push it and try to get D E P to say otherwise, they're fine with it, but then, you know, you get. But I think, you know, if you really wanted to push it and try to get DEP to say otherwise, that they're fine with it, but then, you know, you get to the practical standpoint of who's going to do the, you know, the soil testing. I mean, the, again, the difference between, between organic and, and automotive is automotive leaks, and they're not leaking organic material. They're leaking oil and, and other items that, that are coming out of their, out of their trucks and engines that, you know, is DEP going to say, no problem, you know, we're gonna, I'm sure.
I don't think they, I don't think.
The question becomes, do we want to permit it as a special use in the commercial, country commercial zone?
Or, or.
I don't think.
I don't think so.
For Alice, even, even, you know, that, that, or just as a special use permit, that has to meet certain criteria, no matter, notwithstanding what the underlying zone is. So I, I, because, because you go, you have these odd situations and odd lots, but don't get developed for anything, can't be developed because they're on, you know, they're basically been sterilized by the code or some regulator, and may lend itself to this type of thing, so. And, and it may, and then, you know, it doesn't have to be a vast, it could be, look, if I have five vehicles, it may be, that's all you allow, that's fine. But, you know, it, it, you know, it's not, it's not going to be a hundred and sixty vehicles, it may be, so it, it, it's just that it blanketly just disallow it isn't a wise thing either. And, and so, uh, all I'm saying is, you know, if I can get you to be open minded about it, and, you know, and, 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 but you have to recognize that an issue in town, uh, that needs to be addressed, and, 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 but if, if you don't want to address it, then the answer is no again. If you ask me, you, what, for, for your commercial vehicles in the residential zone, the answer is going to be no, and you should say no. I don't think that, uh, so you explain, it's the way you frame the question, and if you frame it that way, then I'll just tell my clients, forget it.
So what are we saying? Reszone this, Michael, into a, into a country commercial type of thing?
No, I, I think, I think.
You already did.
No, I think you've got to look at, as you have, you, you, you get one of these applications all the time, and you're going to get more of them, because this is what's, it's, it's going to happen. So the thing is, do you start to address this problem, or you just push it off? Uh, you just say, we get it, but we don't, we're really not going to allow it in the town, and the only place where you can allow it, I mean, you've got the, uh, I don't know, you, you, it was, it's, it's here, they went out, they're not coming tonight, so let's face it, right?
Michael, can we talk at some point, not, I want to ask your question, but I don't want to ask it in public. I have a question. Um, because I asked this question of your client, and I want you to answer it for me, and I don't want to.
All right, listen, I think, I think, Mike, you're muted. I don't know how. Um, Mike, the, the, I think, I think bottom line is that I don't think the board's ready to make a decision on this one, where the, I, I guess the board doesn't, we want to kick it? The, I mean, it's, I want to hear from the board.
Yeah, well, what I, what I was trying to say is, you know, the, this, the problem that Michael spoke about has already come up in different areas, and I think, uh, I, I think the, uh, the most recent was, uh, the Yorktown, uh, garden supply. And there were issues with the parking there, and neighbors, you know, you, there, there was a truck with a different logo on it, which was the same, hey, same company per se, and it was, it was all a disaster, and, and we know, we all know that that was an ongoing thing. Uh, so I, I think there, there really is a definite shortage. I think that, I think that, you know, you don't want to set the precedence, but I don't think that a, uh, a, a special use permit, uh, is, 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 uh, called for. Uh, I remember going to the site, it's very well screened, uh, it did, had a lot of crap all over the place, so that needed to be cleaned up. Uh, and you know what? If, if DEP didn't have a problem with it, you know, I'd be willing to, to have the conversation to see what can move next. There's a definite need in, in our community. There are a lot of different companies, and, you know, we, you know, I look at, I look at what was out on the streets in our, uh, you know, in the storms, in the tree services, and, and everyone out there. I look at the fact that our state park is being used as a parking lot for Con Edison. You know, so we can't pretend that, that, that this need isn't there, and that our community doesn't need it.
Are you saying that we need to be able to meet all the needs of anybody who wants something?
No, but I'm thinking that we need to be able to meet the needs of our community, and having, you know, have, having people that do tree work based out of Yorktown, rather than saying that, them saying, gee, you know, I can't park my vehicles there, I'm going to go to a different community, and, and.
Where do, where do they live? Michael, where does your owner live? Does he live in Yorktown?
You got muted.
Where does your owner live? Does he live in Yorktown? Because I think you're mixing apples and oranges.
Does the owner live in Yorktown? Does anyone know? No.
Well, no, I, actually, I was, I'm not, I know he's leasing the space. So, it's not.
And they own the property.
Right, but it's the companies that want to be in Yorktown and operate that don't have a place to park that are, that are u- utilizing them, from what I understood when we went there on our site visit.
Yes, but the question becomes is, every time somebody needs something, do we have to fulfill it? That need?
Not, if it's not for the good of the town.
Well, and for it to know what the good of the town is, you want to, you want to put this in a district where it's not approved, then you would have to do a whole new study on, and as to whether or not, how it would affect that district. It's not as simple as you think it is.
I understand that.
I know, tr- you know, uh, enough, enough, trucks don't offend me. Um, it, it's, it's. It's just not a, it's just not a clear cut, dry area, as Michael had said. Um, and there is a definite need for it. I mean, I can't park my stuff in Yorktown. I've lived here my whole life. Um, so there is a need for it. How do we apply that need and to where it should go? I'm not certain.
John, could we, I mean, I don't mean to cut you off, Tommy, but what about, if, when you're thinking about where those types of parking could be, I mean, do, are you thinking like, someplace like Front Street?
Who, are you talking to me or John?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm, I'm, I'm back again. I don't know, it, now it unmuted. It seems like when I put it on my phone, it's unmuted on the computer.
That's, that's.
I'm sorry, Alice. I, I, I try to, I, I don't believe he's a resident, but he does own those three parcels down there.
I know.
So he's a Yorktown taxpayer, and I always think it, you know, you got to be careful about, you know, residents different than residents. He's a taxpayer.
No, no, no. No, no, no. What I meant, what I meant by that was, you are absolutely right. When I lived off of Pro Hill Road, there was a gentleman who brought his truck home, and I don't think neighbors had any problems with it. Um, uh, what, what we're, what we're trying to wrestle with right now is, you want to create a use in a zone where there is not that use.
Right.
Um, and, and you want us to say, okay, and it's actually at the foot of, at the top of a, uh, reservoir, you know, John, where's John Landy? Where'd he go? I know John Landy said he doesn't mind. I do mind, um. You know, Michael, when you were town attorney?
Yeah.
Caught me a lot of, a lot of stuff.
It, it's, Alice, I didn't mean that, I, I don't mind it, it's just. I thought it would be a better way to control it. It's been a mess up there for years. Uh, we've been trying to get it cleaned up, and I just, we can keep a better eye on it. That's all I meant.
I, I understand John, John Landy's point about regulating it, it's just.
I, 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 I just don't think it's, I just don't think it's the appropriate place for it.
How do we regulate it when John Tegger just told us there, there are places out in, in Jefferson Valley where it shouldn't be? So we're not regulating anything.
But that goes back to, but that goes back to my, what I was trying to say earlier. So if we are recognizing the fact that this is a, this is, there's a lack, there's a lack of, of parking for these, uh, for these commercial vehicles, and that's what I was trying to get to earlier, if we're going to go and, and, and try to look at a place like Front Street, is that an appropriate place to allow commercial vehicle parking? They already have the, the school buses there, so.
I would agree.
Why wouldn't we write that, you know, why wouldn't we just write that in and provide a, a corridor that we're comfortable with, and, and that Front Street corridor obviously is much different than where this proposal is, for ob- for obvious.
Yeah, and I, that, that, and I, I would take exception to that. I think that's exactly what you wouldn't do. The, 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 the outdoor storage of the buses on Front Street is what causes Front Street to look like crap. You know, when you go further down Front Street, it looks really nice. So the thing is, if, what I'm saying, what, you know, it, it's not necessarily the use, it's how it's put, how it's, how it's executed is, that's really the issue.
I agree with you.
His property.
It's a valid point.
His pa- his property, execute that use on his property, is absolutely benign, because it's so well covered, so well camouflaged, oh, in the, in the background, that it really actually is, it actually makes sense there. It's off the beaten path, and nobody, it, it affects nobody. Um, the only person, only, only thing that you have to worry about is DEP. If DEP's okay with it, and we should all be okay with it. Front Street, on the other hand, I think, you know, you'd, you'd want to trend it towards, in another direction, rather than having that, so.
I, I, I'm just, again, I, I was just trying to say that if we ever, uh, recognizing a shortage, to try to find the reasons that we would want to allow it. Now, I recognize your point, and, and, and I think it's valid, but I, I think ultimately, from my standpoint, it comes down to DEP.
All right, well, well, let me, because this guy, that, you know, what, I, I've, I've done these late meetings, and so much of the human mind can absorb it.
Yeah, you're right.
Let, let me, let me, let me floor, uh, uh, at least pick the ties with DEP, or find out whether, you know, if it's, if it's completely, you know, out of the question with them, then it should be out of the question with you, no question about it. If, 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 if they're amenable to it, or they have, they're open minded to it, I'm, all I would be asking you guys to do is be open minded about it as well. And I think you have enough creative mind, where we can, you know, the town, look at this issue and really create, you know, statutory framework where this could be done, notwithstanding the underlying zone, but it would have to be tied to the property and characteristics of the property, rather than the underlying zone.
Okay.
I think we, you know, all right, so can I, can I leave it at that?
Sounds fair.
All right, I, 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 I got one. All right. Alice, I know you, 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 I just want to get your, gauge your comfort level with that.
Michael, I'm never, you know, I think you're a great guy, but I'm, I, I like, I'm not sure that the country commercial district is where we need to do this. Um.
I, I, I don't disagree with you, Alice, but I, I'm, I, so I'm saying, move away from the zoning, the specific go, you, you, I think you created statute where the characteristics of the property, notwithstanding.
No, I agree with you. Now, that, I would agree.
Okay, all right.
And maybe it's something the town's got to look at, if the public wants to do that.
Yeah, and I, I just appreciate just the open minded, you know, you know, just give me a shot to, to, you know, if I, if I, if I, if you need you guys to be open minded about it, I'll, I'll give it, give it a shot. I, and I absolutely respect where, everything you guys say, because believe me, I, 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 you know, there, it's a problematic issue, and it, and it, and can become potentially an eyesore, and, and, and I think everything else, you don't want that. You just, you don't want it anywhere. I understand that.
You still live on Hanover?
Am I still up there? Yeah.
Well, next thing I know, you, you want to go to come and say, well, can they park those trucks up in my driveway, where we, you?
Well, yeah, I got, and, so, you can't talk to me about parking cars on property, because I have.
You absolutely don't see anything from your, from the roadway at your.
Oh, I, 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 I've got, my property's close down, I've got a barn back in the back, and I've got cars in the barn, and, uh, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm happy down there, I'm in the age where I maybe stay down there and make birdhouses all day.
It's a great house.
There's a need for that too, Mike.
I know.
What?
I appreciate your time, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Good night, Michael.
Night.
All right, be good, take care.
All right. Let's go to our last item, and that's, and that's, uh, Mr. Tegger, and Miss, and, and Robyn Steinberg. Sorry again for the lateness of the hour. John, you, you've created, we talked about this with the board in the past, and that's on-call services for traffic engineer and, uh, and a ta- and, uh, environmental consultant.
That's right, and I sent both of them to you, so you should have both of them.
Yep.
Uh, okay, so, let's take the traffic one first. Um, and I'm just gonna, I'm really going to talk about kind of the meat and potatoes of it. Um, you know, all of the rest of the, uh, nuts and bolts are there for you to, to look at.
Yep.
Um, I, I will say that, um, I think Adam did, worked on with Diana, a, an- another RFP for traffic consultant, and they had, they had a whole host of, uh, general requirements, which I've incorporated into this. It's at the, the end, but what I want, what I want to talk about is the task that I'm, uh, asking for the prospective consultants to fill.
Yep.
There's three of them for the traffic consultant. There's task one, which is, uh, titled development application review, and basically that is applicant comes in as a project, uh, it's a type of project that they understand that they should have their own traffic consultant, and we then engage this traffic consultant to review that traffic report that they do.
Yeah.
Okay, the second one is similar to that, except that the applicant in this, um, case, and along with the type of development is, it is, doesn't necessarily care or want to get their own traffic consultant, and in this case, we ask our traffic consultant to look at the traffic conditions of that application, and in some cases, even ask them to do the data collection, such as trip generation and so on and so forth. So in other words, our consultant in, in these cases can evaluate traffic from, you know, very broad-based level of what the type of use is, what that type of use generates, what they believe it would, how it would impact the network around them, all the way up to producing an actual analysis, which would be doing some data collection, taking counts, and doing a real uh, analysis. It can be arranged between there, depending on the project. The third one, uh, is entitled transportation planning, which in this case, um, if the town has their own projects, own sponsored projects, mini master plan, an area plan, uh, the triangle intersection, and they need a traffic consultant to evaluate intersections around town, uh, that is the section under which they would do that, so, and in, in that case, it's, it's really transportation planning. It's not necessarily, uh, development-related, uh, traffic analysis.
Tommy needs a, a person as well.
Yeah.
Tommy Diana?
Tommy, yes.
You need a, a traffic consultant as well for the, the areas that you really need someone to look at in terms of, like, say, like Alex Mill.
For the traffic and safety committee.
For, oh, yeah, we could use, you know, could always use that for, for, um, uh, you know, like you say, for, for Alex Mill, for stop signs, for this, for that, you know, that, you know, there's a bunch of places I'd love to have, have, uh, uh, rotaries, what do they, what do they call them? Not rotaries, but, uh, oh, God.
Roundabout.
Roundabouts, roundabouts.
They are called rotaries too.
Yeah, yeah, and Massachusetts, I think they call them rotaries, but, uh, the.
They're roundabouts, right?
Yeah, yeah.
I think they're very safe.
Yeah, they are very safe. I mean, y- you, you look at a place like East Main Street, in, in, in trouble, we're up for the traffic light, a roundabout would be good there, down the center of town. There's a, there, there's several places you can think of right off the top of your head, that traffic consultant has or could, you know, come, come, come across with, with a plan for something like that. I don't know if they're any more cost-effective than a traffic light, or if they, uh, uh, or if they cost more or less, or, 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 or what it may be, but, you know, I think it would be a great, uh, great asset to have a traffic consultant.
Clearly, there's a need, without a doubt.
Yeah.
Clearly a need, and, and we saw that, I say again, with that, with that gas station approval that we went through, John, up in, up on Barger.
Yeah.
No. Barger.
That's right.
Barger, 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 uh, up on Barger Street, that, that, that's the thing I keep going back to, and it would have been just, you know, so much for John if we had this in place, so.
I agree.
I think it's important. So, John, I, I think it's well done.
Okay, and, uh, just to note it, that in here, it is proposed to be administered by planning department or the engineering department.
Okay.
So both, both departments can, but, you know, I'm, I'm anticipating that Michael Quinn, the town engineer's office, would have some, uh, spotty need as, as he goes through. Maybe, maybe he won't, but it's in there for him.
Okay.
And if you want to, if you want, want to get in, sorry about, sorry, Alice.
You need a vote to send it out?
Uh, we can do it. We can make a motion to, to authorize the, uh, Uh, we can do it. We can make a motion to, to authorize the, um, Di, do you need, what do you need? A motion to authorize the RFP?
To, um, advertise the RFP for.
You have a motion from Councilman Roper. I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Done. All right. Let's go on to the last one.
Last one is environmental and you've probably uh, recognized this one, but I, I, I'm gonna do the same thing. I have it broken into three tasks. The first one is wetland delineation. Now I know that engineering can do that. They have been doing that. Um, Planning Board will need that, um, for their projects, so that is in there. If, if the Engineering Department wants to avail themselves of this consultant, they can also do that because as in the last one, they are included as, uh, in, in, as one of the ones, the bodies that administrates these contracts. Second task is wetland mitigation evaluation. So for instance, if you have eighteen seventy-five Brookdale, you'll bring in the, um, consultant, he'll look at the mitigation plan for whatever wetland mitigation they need to do for the disturbance that they did. We'll get a professional going to toe-to-toe with the other professional on the other side of the table. And Task Three is in the case when you have bigger project, a vacant land in which you may have some habitat, habitat or biodiversity issues, and you can ask your consultant to evaluate that. Lot of, lot of utility here for both Planning Board and your board.
Excellent.
You know, I, I, uh, I, I know there's, there, there's a direction that we're looking at at this point in time. Do RFPs, do we have to pick from an RFP? Or can we just send it out to get an idea what the cost is gonna be?
Uh, I mean.
Well, go ahead, Matt. I'm sorry.
All right, go ahead. You can, you can speak.
Well, the, the section in here, both in general requirements and in, uh, couple pages down from where I've been talking about, it gives you the right to reject all RF, RFPs that you get. You're not obligated to select any. You're not obligated to select the lowest bidder. You can select portions of their proposal and you can select more than one. So as, as it's written, you can, you can select them or not. You can select portions of them. I don't know if that answers your question, but. But, and, and there's another, let me give you another part B to the answer. And maybe this will answer it. The other thing is that we have had propo- uh, RFPs such as this, uh, we've gotten proposals on them. Tom, maybe you're asking, maybe we can just contact some people and see if they'll talk with us more informally? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah, I think so. Because i- i- if we put this out in a formal bid at this point, it may not work in as far as the things that we have discussed in some closed session items.
Okay.
That's just my thought.
Uh, certainly, uh, what I could. I'm sorry, Alice.
I, I said, I understand, Tommy. You're right.
Yeah.
You know, if you want to be, certainly I could talk to the, the past respondees, if that is a word.
I like the word.
And, and just ask them, listen, you mean, you sent us a proposal on, on this RFP one time, you know? How valid is it, you know? What would you think in terms of updating it?
Yeah.
The ten percent more, five percent more?
Yeah, okay. But I mean, what, what, why do we do that on, on both cases for this point? Not put it as an official RFP? Um, Matt, you understand what I'm talking about?
I mean, if you really think that's the best course, I just, I just want to make sure that we have the resources that we need. And, and, you know, I think it's important to have someone working for the town's best interest, to make sure that the applications that are coming through are being reviewed properly. So, uh, that's all I'm trying to, I think that's all we're trying to accomplish.
Oh, no, no, I, I understand and I agree. Um, but if, if, we may be able to do something all encompassing.
Yeah, I think we need to talk about this offline. Um,
Yeah.
John, um, can you hold back that one?
Oh, are we, are we okay going with the Traffic Consultant and you want to, and we hold back the environmental?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, Tommy?
Yes, yes.
Okay, fine. So then we'll, we'll table the Environmental Consultant for the time being. Uh, but we'll have an off, offline conversation about that. And then we, but we will, we have pass a resolution authorizing the town clerk to advertise for the Traffic Consultant.
Motion.
That was already done.
Second.
It was already done. We don't need, we, you don't need a motion. That was already taken care of.
I'm like, it's late.
I know. So let, let's, let's entertain the final motion. I just want to thank everyone and apologize for the lateness of the hour. But we are done with, unless, John, is there anything else you wanted to add?
Not at this late hour now. Thank you.
Robin? Smart decisions. All right. Thank you very much. We'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Oh, no, we're not done.
Resolution.
Brian, see how fast we're trying to get done? Uh, resolutions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jeez. Resolutions. Uh, we're gonna, we already passed the one from the Town Board. Uh, we're gonna pass a resolution, uh, which is the Energy Efficiency and Green Procurement Policy. This was, uh, brought to us by the Climate Smart Communities Task Force in December. We had discussed this and we worked with our Comptroller, uh, to draft this. Uh, so we're gonna pass a resolution adopting the Energy Efficiency and Green Procurement Policy from Building Maintenance. Uh, let's see here, from Building Maintenance, it's a resolution. They're studying the contract with Marshall Alarm Systems for the alarm monitoring, monitoring services for town facilities through August first twenty twenty-one. We have transfers from the Comptroller.
But don't we have the other one with regard to, um, Hanover Electric?
Uh, not that I have in my possession. I thought that was, was taken care of. Was it not?
It's a Building Maintenance that you just spoke about.
No, that was another one.
We have alarm systems. Is there another one that I'm missing?
Yeah.
For electric work.
I don't know why it's not here. All I have is Marshall Alarms.
I didn't get a Marshall Alarms. I got, I don't know what version, uh, agenda I have.
That was, that's in version two. This is in version one.
Oh.
So I'm sorry. No, no.
Can we read it to you, Michael? I mean, um, uh, Matt, since you don't have it?
Yeah, please.
Be resolved that the annual maintenance contract for electrical work on town buildings for the town of Yorktown is hereby extended for one year per the terms of the contract.
Yep, that's, that's fine. Uh, I don't know why I don't have that. I apologize.
I don't, I don't have the, uh, Marshall Alarm.
Either.
Was that taken off?
I think that was in a later version.
I don't know if that's the later or the earlier version.
We got the earlier version.
Okay, all right. My Marshall Alarm is fine.
Apologies to the board. I don't understand what happened there, uh, but we have a resolution for Marshall Alarm and a resolution for Hanover Electric.
Yeah.
New contracts. We have, uh, a resolution authorizing the Comptroller to process transfers from the twenty twenty budget as well as the twenty twenty-one budget. We have a resolution authorizing the Comptroller to pay the cash value unused time to Kyle Thornton. We have a resolution authorizing the Comptroller to process a transfer from the twenty twenty budget regarding the Hunterbrook and two oh two sewer extension and the Hunterbrook two oh two sewer district.
Yeah.
That's actually under twice. Uh, we have, uh, an authorization from the Comptroller to process the following transfer budget from the twenty twenty budget. That's regarding the Kichwan Water District. From the clerk's office, uh, a resolution to adopt the retention and disposition scheduled for New York local government records. LGS one revised by the State Archives. Also to approve the garbage license for AAA carding and rubbish removal, Inc., to service commercial properties in the town of Yorktown for the year of twenty twenty-one. We have a resolution from the library authorizing the library director to sign an agreement with D P Wolf, Inc. And from the Engineering Department, a resolution for a bond release request from, for sixteen thirty-one Commerce, excuse me, Central Street. Uh, also a resolution for a bond release request for six eighty Croton Lake Road. And, um, the Highway Department uh, that the above-listed vehicle be deemed obsolete and sold at auction by absolute auctions and realty. And that has to do with nineteen ninety-nine Ford three fifty. Motion made by Councilman Lacterman. We have a second. From Councilman Roper. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. I'm sorry, and we have one more. That was handed to us, uh, from closed, uh, regarding the personnel. Be resolved that Robert Alfano is hereby appointed Parks Groundskeeper, job class code zero two eight eight dash oh five within the Parks and Rec Department effective January first, twenty twenty-one, to be paid from the Yorktown CSCA Salary Schedule, A, Group Ten, Step One, which is fifty-four thousand, five hundred thirty-nine dollars annually, and B, resolved that this appointment is subject to a probationary period not less than twelve weeks. We're not seeing the first date of appointment, which is January first, twenty twenty-one. We'll make a, we have a motion from Councilman Lacterman. We have a second.
Second.
Councilman Roper, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And now back, I'm sorry, Councilman Diana.
Did, did we, uh, did we do the resolution, or did I just miss it for, for Lou Mastro for his bond release?
Yes, we did.
Okay, all right. I just missed it then. Okay. And, uh, just before we, before we adjourn, we have to, uh, we're gonna have to call the company in that takes care of our heating equipment. Um, we've had two places that went down. Well, the Town Hall said, they said, in the middle of the winter, they couldn't get there till Thursday.
Yep.
Okay, to fix it. That's unacceptable.
I agree.
I don't, I don't know what, what, what they did with the police department, if anything. I guess they're going again because they're not frozen popsicles up there. But whatever, whoever we have, and I believe it's peak performance, maybe they, maybe the principal of that company needs to come in, uh, and talk to us about what, what is in his contract to do.
I agree.
Uh, I have no problem with that. We'll bring him in, uh, and have a conversation with him.
But may we, may we pull that contract if we can, just take a quick look at it? Maybe he's not required?
Adam, can you pull that? Uh, we lost Adam. Um,
I, I can pull.
Okay.
Di, thank you. Appreciate it.
All righty.
Motion.
Motion to close. Motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second. Because you make sure the next time, you know, we should adhere to the time, you know, because sometimes it just goes on fifteen, twenty minutes and everybody's time cannot be wasted like this, you know? Some of the things are not really acceptable to go too long.
I understand that, Councilman.
No, you know.
We have a motion to close. All favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to adjourn. Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Good night.